For the city of Royal Oak, before we get started, let's introduce ourselves, starting to my left.
Dan Goddak.
Carolyn Douglas, Mayor pro tem.
Mike Fortier, Mayor.
Ann Vara.
Tim Twing, Director of Community Development.
Ann Bieke.
Eric Klooster.
Thank you. We have quorum. Next item is the approval of minutes for September 10th. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. Moved by Ms. Bieke. Support by Mr. Goddak. Any discussion on these minutes? Not seeing all those in favor. Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The minutes have been approved. Pardon me. Next item on our agenda. This is public comment on non-agenda items. So if there's anyone here this evening that would like to approach the commission and discuss something that's not on this agenda? Okay, not seeing any hands. We're gonna close.
So are you gonna have public comment on agenda items that are not public hearings?
Yeah.
With the pleasure of the commission. So when the item comes up, you want me to?
And perhaps have a public, perhaps have, I think the accessory dwelling units, is that people are interested in that. Maybe to not make them stay for the whole meeting, you could do public comment now. Or if you'd like to have them hear the discussion and then comment, that might be another alternative.
Okay. Is there somebody, oh hello. He snuck up on me.
I'm gonna make a motion just to do public comment now on all items except public hearings, and there aren't any, so.
Okay, there's been a motion to open up the public comment now for any items on the agenda. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Support by the mayor. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, could we just get your name, please?
Okay, my name is Roberta Brown. I live at 417 Henry Boulevard and have lived there for 35 years. I am here to comment on the zoning ordinance text amendments for accessory dwellings and to voice my opposition to have any such accessory dwellings added to our residential community. I've done a bit of research. I found that homeownership in Royal Oak, this is according to Data USA, is at roughly 66.2 percent. This is as of 2017. And rentals are at 33.8 percent. Now, I don't know if that includes Airbnbs, you know, because these are relatively new phenomenon. But that means that roughly one out of every three residences is a rental. And that's a lot, in my mind. I've also found a report that our current police chief assistant city manager presented before the mayor and members of the city commission dated 4th of July of last year. And in it, we have, he's given examples of how other Michigan communities have regulated short-term rentals. The thing is, though, as I look at the communities, Sagatuck, Grand Haven, and Traverse City, these are, this is really a false comparison to us, because these are all like tourist destinations, as opposed to Royal Oak, which is, again, a residential area. When I look at the memorandum dated September 27th of this year to the planning commission from the planning division, I'm seeing language that, some of it is specific, some of it, though, uses the words, "consider this," "consider that." I believe that if this is passed, is that this will make us even more of a transient community rather than bolster us as a residential neighborhood community. The other thing that concerns me is, I consider this to be a stealth amendment. I found out about this from a neighbor who sent out an email. This is similar to something that happened several months ago with a building, a business at the northwest corner of Henry and Lincoln, across from Nello's Restaurant, where the proper notice was not sent out to the homeowners in the area. And again, we only found out about it by happenstance. And then went for a meeting that was held at that business. So again, I would urge that this just be totally set aside. Let's look at what we can do to keep this a residential community. Thank you.
Thank you. I should let everyone know that public comment is three minutes, so. Next. Just your name, please.
Good evening. Jean Sarnacki, 802 West Fourth Street. I apologize, my more formal notes were left at the office. So I wanted to let you know that I have significant concerns with moving forward as it appears you're considering that the type of change you wish to make is magnificently large. It's a big change.
What are you referring to?
I'm referring to the memo regarding accessory dwelling units.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I did do some research as well, and interestingly enough, some of the communities cited. April of this year, Grand Rapids, when they made some changes to their ADUs, they had several months of community engagement, including public hearings and feedback sessions, prior to doing those kinds of changes. And when they came to a process that they approved, it calls for neighbors within 300 feet of a household requesting an ADU. Excuse me, I wasn't sure. An ADU that, if they wanted a public hearing to discuss that property's request for an ADU, that a public hearing would be held. And so I thought that was an interesting way to incorporate more public input into the ADU process. In May of this year, in Ann Arbor, a 6 to 5 vote against, the city council voted down the loosening of regulations regarding their ADUs. And part of the conversation was the fact that ADUs frankly are expensive and oftentimes not a considerable and effective way to reduce household costs and to provide affordable housing. Another community cited was Boulder, Colorado, and they had what they call a saturation limit. No more than 20 percent of the parcels within 300 feet of a property may have an ADU. Public notice is required. A public comment will occur to address neighborhood concerns. And so my point is this, is that what we have seen in terms of that memo is very short on information, short on how you would go about doing this. This really is a master plan kind of a question. You had discussed doing a master plan several months ago. You apparently decided not to do that, but yet you're doing this. I find that very disingenuous. Disingenuous, and I hope you'll reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Hullett.
Good evening, Mayor and commissioners. I'd like to address the ADU issue as well. One of the things that we are faced with these days is green, being green, not having water runoff. One of the items that is, this would allow, is if a garage is converted, it would allow people to pave over their front yard and park in their front yard. Which is, A, not green at all, because you're creating more impervious surface. And B, it's a really terrible look for a city. I can just imagine what Vincetta, Northwood, and Beverly Hills will look like with big parking lots in front of their houses with cars parked all over the place. It's hardly attractive. And I really object to the method that this is being done by. This is a master plan item. This is not just something you should be passing up here. And especially without even a public hearing, and any kind of notification at all, just, oh, we're gonna discuss it and then we'll bring it back. That's unacceptable. This is a completely a master plan item. This is the largest single change proposed for single-family neighborhoods ever in Royal Oak. And we're not going to have a master plan session, an input to see if people actually want it. Unacceptable.
Thank you. Anyone else? Name, please.
Judy Garlock. I didn't do any research. I don't have any notes or anything, but my husband and I just moved here two years ago. And we've really invested in our home and have fixed it up. We live on Gardenia. And we didn't realize when we bought there that it's just rentals everywhere. We are surrounded with rentals. And I think the problem with something like this is, people that stay in these or that rent, they don't invest in the community. I mean, I've just seen, you know, they don't take care of their yards. They don't rake their leaves. They don't cut the grass. They don't shovel the snow. And I just, you know, I like to be neighborly and keep things up and have things look nice. And I just feel like, we don't really need any more rentals. What we really need is people that invest in the community that are here to stay. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is Paul Curtis. I live at 226 West Bloomfield Avenue, and I'm a real estate broker. So the discussion about ownership versus rental, it's true that there are rentals in Royal Oak. Lots and lots and lots of apartments for rent. There are some homes that are rented as well. But one of the reasons we have such a high number of rentals is because of apartments. I'm actually here to speak in favor of looking into this accessory dwelling idea because we live in a culture where aging in place is really, really difficult. One of the concerns I have, as I think about older residents, is there comes a time when, you know, being in your house alone is a really bad idea for somebody. Could be for physical reasons, could be for social reasons, could be for nutritional reasons. I've helped more than one client, you know, sell their home when they, as they were older, and they were looking forward to getting to a place where someone else was doing some cooking. People, being alone in a house is a bad idea. If there were accessory dwelling units available in a family member's yard, nothing to do with rental, by the way. I don't know that it's a necessary concern about renting. I think we can do this in such a way that has nothing to do with renting. Has to do with families finding solutions. If there's a chance to have an apartment over a garage or a tiny home there and a chance to be connected to the family and still maintain some level of independence, I think that's something that we ought to look at for people who have to sell their homes and can't find affordable housing in our community, because it's difficult on a fixed income to find affordable housing here. And that goes for young people as well. We have student loan, I call it life-stunting debt upon our young people. And getting a chance to get a start with housing could really be a big blessing to families to have this opportunity. Nothing to do with rentals. Opportunity for families to keep their families together, help them get a start, create independence, and it's worth looking at. So I'm here to encourage you to follow through on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we got a few people here in the back.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposed tower next to the AT&amp;T building.
Your name, please.
My name is Frank Arvin. I live at 326 East Fifth Street. Many of you know me. I've been involved in many of the committees on the Royal Main Street Committee and the downtown task force to determine what was going to happen out here. So I'm very interested in the quality of our downtown and the, especially the aesthetic quality of our downtown. And the proposed 250-foot tower goes against our master plan of trying to beautify our city. It goes against a good idea about creating a beautiful urban district that we're trying to create, especially with the new park that's here. And so I hope you would reconsider this. I came in opposition here when they did the zoning board of appeals, and that was approved, unfortunately. But there are still better options. There's an option of relocating it to our civic district, which would be less noticeable and less prominent in our downtown. There's also the option of creating a much more interesting tower as opposed to the inexpensive, cheap tower that is currently proposed there. I understand the requirements that the city has in terms of needing to be in the downtown district for proper communication, and that makes complete sense. But putting it at the heart of our city seems to be a misplaced idea at this point. It's short-sighted, I think, and we should really reconsider where that is going. I understand there's been a lot of planning already up to this point. Unfortunately, that planning didn't consider the quality of our downtown and the aesthetic quality of our downtown. It only considered the pragmatics of the possibility of getting an inexpensive tower next to the AT&amp;T building. So I'm hoping that you have the ability to redirect that and come up with a better solution than what's proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's see. Right there, let's just go down the row closest to the aisle, and then next, you can be next.
Hi, Pamela Lindell, 409 Inglewood Avenue. I'm here to speak on the accessory dwellings. What Paul mentioned is already allowed, so that's kind of a non-issue. But, and even beyond that, whether you agree with it or you don't agree with it, I think the real issue here is that this is one of the biggest changes to single-family housing in Royal Oak history, and you're not putting it to public discussion. There's no transparency here, and this is a master plan matter. That concerns me, whether you like it or you don't like it. This is something that we should be able to discuss as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. No clapping, please. Yes, ma'am. Hello. Janice Wagman, regarding the accessory dwelling units? Sorry, I think it's your last name, Wagman? Wagman, thank you. The city paid $30,000 to Land Use USA to do a survey and make a target market analysis. According to Commissioner Douglas, this is what is driving these new initiatives. But there's a problem. Land Use USA is a huge proponent of high-density development and new urbanism, and thus it's not exactly an impartial study. So what exactly is the reason for this proposal? Seniors, renters, young families? According to a local developer, Mr. Wilson, who changed his project from apartment rentals to homeowner-occupied condos, we are already overbuilding rental units. Any further stated vacancy rates prove it. According to numerous national studies, not anecdotal reports, seniors overwhelmingly, 85 to 90 percent, want to live in their homes, not move to an outbuilding. And seniors aren't looking to take on more debt in order to build income-producing additions to their homes. If you want to help seniors, then get grants, use CDBG funds, get some of the union workers in town and organizations in town to build ramps and modify their homes so they can continue to live in their homes. Or, if they must move, make zoning changes to promote construction of one-family senior, oh, I'm sorry, of one-family senior or young-family-friendly homes in residential neighborhoods. Young families are struggling to manage work, children, and life, so I'm not sure how many would be willing or able to move so they could share separate quarters with their parents or want to move into an 800-square-foot accessory dwelling unit to care for them. So what or who does this actually benefit? It benefits the general fund. Tax revenue will definitely increase. With Headley and Prop A, there are only two ways for that to happen: new construction and new millages. The city needs increased revenue because we have a structural deficit. In other words, every year, the city commission is spending more of our tax dollars than we are receiving. If the commission does not figure out a way to increase revenue, our general fund will be depleted in the very near future. Fraser faced that same position and had to cut services and pass a nine-mil increase. This is a way for the city to collect more tax revenue, the real reason. Figure out another way to get us out of this mess without, and leave our single-family neighborhoods alone. Thank you. Okay, let's see, in the back. You had your hand up next. Hello.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Charlie Usher. I'm here to talk about the accessory dwelling unit, I guess, proposal. Used to be on the zoning board many years ago. I have a home next door that's an Airbnb, and that's been an interesting experience. It's non-owner-occupied. Been some issues. Overall, hasn't been terrible. I'm just a little concerned. We have a senior accessory housing ordinance currently. And the first provision of it reads, "The dwelling shall be owner-occupied during the duration of the special-use permit." I would imagine, once in a while, if people want to do a mother-in-law flat, my wife and I considered it for my mother, they approach the city under this ordinance and they apply for the special-use permit. Is that not the case? Okay, so why do we need to change this, is I guess my question. My concern is, once the elderly person has passed away, you will allow anything to happen there. It's, you're taking away the deed restriction. What would prevent a property owner from renting out one of the two allowed dwellings? Is an Airbnb, VRBO, or other type of non-owner-occupied short-term rental after the elderly family members pass. Our current zoning ordinance prevents this. You want to take that away? I'm a little curious as to why you would favor that. I mean, I know a lot of people own and operate Airbnbs, and maybe it's toward that, maybe not. But I don't really think we have the crisis that exists to change something as drastic as this, as this. You all are elected city officials. It's your right to do that. But I would hope that you would listen to the citizens and single-family homeowners that bought their homes in single-family's own neighborhoods because they wanted to have single families in them. So I would hope you would consider it, and thank you for the time to speak.
Thank you. Okay, sir, next.
Steve Schwartz, 803 West Fourth Street. Just wanted to comment on the accessory dwellings. I'm also opposed to it. I think when I read through the memorandum, and like one of the prior folks said, they got it in an email from a neighbor. That's when I just found out about it as well. And when you read through it, it's clear the current ordinance is set up for people who have a family situation, somebody who's elderly that needs care, and it's a special circumstance. I'm concerned about making the change, both going from size up to 800 square feet. I mean, I look at that, that's taking my garage and putting a second story on it. And then allowing anyone to do it, you're changing really the face of what Royal Oak would be. And I think doing that without getting more input from the citizens is, it's a concern and it's a mistake because it could change what people came here for, what they love about the city. And it really sets up the question in your mind of, is this a place I want to live? Or is this just gonna be a place that's gonna be full of rentals for a whole bunch of people just to come and hang out? And I can understand some of the concerns, but I think this big of a change really needs more input from the community. And I think especially giving, given everything that's going on, that's really important in today's climate to have all of your citizens heard and make sure. Even if you look at studies from other places, you might say, I look at a study over here, it looks good. But is that what Royal Oak and what Royal Oak citizens want? If it's not, we shouldn't do it. And I don't think the due diligence has been done at this point to make sure that that's really what the citizens want. So one of the other concerns I'd say I have is, you know, every time we have a storm come through, you lose power. If you, if you set this in place that allows this many people to use accessory dwellings to rent them out, do we even have the infrastructure to support it? All those things need to be looked at because this will have a big change. It's not a minor change. And so in conclusion, I just think a lot more study needs to be done and a lot more input from the citizens. So I would hope you guys would appreciate that and consider it. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Yes, right here in the front.
1028 North Lafayette. I thought we were gonna be talking about something else, so this will be very short. How would, how would an outbuilding look on the standard 40 to 60-foot site? Where would the children play? How would the view look from adjacent neighbors? I assume there would be new ratios. How many variances would be approved? Even if changing the improvements ratio, how large can this structure be? Would an older person be comfortable alone in a small area in the back of your house, especially in the winter? Can it be rented? How would the property tax be calculated? How does it affect sale value? We all, we should know about that. Would this effectively result in two complete houses on one site if it includes a bath and a kitchen? Or could Grandma just be happy with a hot plate? I don't want to see any more unappealing changes to our neighborhoods and more investors of all types owning our residential properties. Forty to 50 percent of a lot of our downtown development condos are owned by investors. I don't like to see non-compatible intrusive properties getting variance approval because the neighbors are afraid to resist. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Yes, on the aisle there? Yep.
Hello, Deb Campbell, East University. I'm here tonight about the accessory.
First name, Deb? Deb Campbell, thank you.
Yep. Accessory dwellings, I'm opposed to that. I was part of the master plan process 20 years ago, and the number-one goal was neighborhood preservation. And talking about preserving the integrity of single-family neighborhoods as being the backbone of our community. What I see tonight, this action here, is to circumvent a transparent, inclusive, community-based master plan process and introduce multifamily into single-family neighborhoods, periods. I don't believe it's about having a mini apartment in the backyard of every home. And I, and I get to this by, it was brought to my attention, and I watched the video from the plan commission meeting on July 13th, where the discussion indicated that the first steps towards eliminating all single-family neighborhoods by changing zoning to allow flats and duplexes. Commissioner Douglas said she'd like to have standards that would allow developers to build what they want strictly by administrative approvals, meaning all decisions would be made between the developer behind closed doors and the planning department with no public hearing from surrounding homeowners. Also, at that 8/13 meeting, Commissioner Douglas further stated that she would like to see two-family homes and multifamily in all residential areas. She went on to say that it's more economical for developers to go taller up in the air, even taller than five stories on Woodward. These kinds of proposed changes to our zoning ordinance must be accompanied with a full and transparent master plan process after input from all stakeholders citywide not pushed through in a vacuum. That neighborhood preservation statement in our master plan rings true today, as it did 20 years ago. Most recently, high-density development that negatively is impacting neighborhoods via PUDs and other zoning variances is met with opposition from armies. Dozens of people are coming up here saying they, they want to keep their, protect their single-family neighborhoods. That you would think that you could go about having, allowing apartments in backyards in single-family neighborhoods, given all the discussion that's been up here about wanting multifamily in all single-family neighborhoods, how you could believe that this could happen without a master plan process. Every single homeowner in a single-family neighborhood should have been given notice about this discussion tonight. And there should, it should be publicly heard, a public hearing on this. This is a tragedy.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Yep, in the back?
My name's Tony Snow. I'm at 343 West Harrison Avenue. I have been a landlord for 30 years now in Royal Oak. Many of the people around, behind me and in front of me probably think I'm up here for, to support this proposal, but I do not. And it isn't because of my rentals. It's because of what all these people have said about single-family homes. That's the basis and the fundamental attraction of Royal Oak. I've owned apartments, and I'll tell you, when you start getting these units in backyards and start getting rentals that are under $1,000, $700, $800 a month, you get the clientele that can afford those rentals. And I have experience with that. I had houses, and if you charge over $1,000, you get a person that can afford it. Under $1,000 or under $800, I've had tenants over the 30 years that missed payments, they're late. I had to evict a couple people. And it's, and when you get renters commensurate with the rent that you charge, and my fear is that these people that have these dwellings in their backyards are inexperienced landlords, and you run into problems. You really run into a lot of problems. Not only with the clientele, but with the landlords doing things that are legal or illegal. And, and that's gonna be an issue. That's a big issue. But I think the most important thing is the, the single-family home situation. You want to keep, maintain that for Royal Oak. Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, my name is Larissa Zuyas Schwartz, and I live at 803 West Fourth Street. My husband and I have lived there for about 10 years, and I brought my daughter. I'm a mom, I stay home. Over the last 10 years, I've seen such an unfortunate change happening around downtown and area where we live, and it just breaks my heart. So, I am opposed, pardon me, to the accessory dwellings. We moved here with the hope of having a family and being able to, you know, raise them with neighbors and other children that my daughter would grow up with, this, you know, situation that I had growing up. It was so nice. And I just feel like all these people coming and going, and it just, it just breaks my heart personally. I've been here for 10 years, so, that's all I have to say. I didn't plan on speaking, but I just felt I should give a mom's perspective, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Razor.
I thank you, Madam Chair, Jim Razor, 201 East Fourth Street, Royal Oak. I'm directly affected by this, so I hope I don't run over. I sent correspondence outlining all of the reasons that I believe this AT&amp;T tower is just a very bad choice. Before I get into that, though, I want to thank you for your service. Having sat there before, I understand how much reading it is, and these are very important decisions for folks to make. As you know, Razor Law is right across the street from this tower. And this tower, at almost a football field height, will be the largest thing in downtown Royal Oak. So this is a super-important decision, because this can outlast everybody at the table, probably outlast our kids. And the fact is, is the plan in front of you violates a myriad of ordinances and can't possibly, or should be, considered. The tower's only sized, let me run through this real quick. The tower's only sized for one macro-site, there's no co-location. That violates 770.88E. It depresses property values. My commercial brokers indicated that will depress the value of my property by a quarter million dollars. That violates 77011C4 and 77088A1. And, I want you to think about the fact that the entire downtown is a residential zone. Anybody that considers building condominiums or other housing is going to have a depressed value. And if you look at the Realtor's opinion, some people, when they have a view like that, they will just not locate there. The landscaping, the epic failure of the landscaping, our ordinance even has a diagram of what you're supposed to do to screen something. It fails. 770.90D indicates that you have to stagger things, there has to be a wall of a certain height, there has to be a certain number of, of things. I mean, essentially, AT&amp;T ignored everything you said at the last meeting. They went back and said, 45 Arbor Vitae, great, that's what we'll do. It, it's horrendous. And the fact is, they haven't been a very good steward of that corner. That thing's been an eyesore for at least the 25 years I've been here. How can we trust them to take, take care of this and do anything good with it? I imagine when you guys talked to them last, there was going to be a beautiful park, there was going to be all sorts of gorgeous things, and no. I mean, you got a horrible plan. And the fact is, is that their submission itself, the rendering, showing that tower all the way in the corner, well, that's not where it's going. It doesn't show the buildings around it. It doesn't give you any idea.
15 seconds, Mr. Razor.
Well, Chair, may I have some more time? I mean, I am directly affected, this is a quarter-million-dollar swing for me.
We've limited to three minutes per person, so, we appreciate it. We've got your letter too, and we know you're opposed.
Thank you. But, but I think the most important thing is, there's an alternative. And the other important thing is, it doesn't meet the criteria, because the ordinance indicates it shall be an alternate design. And it isn't. 77088C1D8, I learned something in reviewing the ordinances, clearly says towers have to be an alternate design. And I've showed you, there's a better design. I know there's a public safety component, I love the chief. Let's not go with the first offer, let's do something cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Razor, appreciate it. I saw some hands, yes, right there.
My name is Dora Beltracitis. I live at 320 South Pleasant Street, and I'm here to express dissatisfaction and oppose to the, the senior housing ordinance. And for a couple of reasons, and a lot of them are already said, but it can't be reiterated enough, I've been a resident nearly 30 years, so it's not like I'm just joined here. But, you know, part of the attraction of the city was the neighborhoods. So neighborhood preservation is really of a concern, because it's dramatically changing. Also, there's concerns, if, when the senior passes, what happens, others have expressed, what happens to that unit? How can it be used? And then who's going to monitor it? Do we have to hire people to monitor that people are making sure that the dwellings are being used as prescribed? You know, that's additional budget for that. There's issues regarding parking, you remove the parking restriction. In our neighborhoods, especially, I live, we have a, a ton of multi, you know, family dwellings. I live amongst many apartments, many on my street, not just, you know, rentals, but apartments, and we don't have enough parking as it is. So that's a concern. Also, you know, it shouldn't be a broad-stroke ordinance change. If people require a change because of personal circumstances, they should be able to apply for it on a one-on-one basis. I don't think this requires a broad-stroke change, and I think it should be for public discussion and approval, not just try to slip it in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Corey Fields, 422 Austin Avenue. I'm here to talk about a different issue than most people have been talking about tonight. This is the zoning for the marijuana businesses, specifically as it relates to the micro-business. As I understand the current zoning plan, the micro-businesses are going to be zoned the same as retailers, in other words dispensaries. And I would like to advocate for them to be zoned the same, or differently than the retailers, because the reason is, well, first of all, I live here, I work here, my kids go to school at Northwood, I, most days I don't leave the city limits, so I'm very much ingrained in the community here. And I was very excited to see that the, the city has been welcoming to the, what the voters will in passing Prop 1. And so I began plans to potentially open a micro-business here, and that's kind of my dream. But with this current zoning plan being zoned the same as retailers, the cost of, of the spaces is going to be prohibitive for micro-businesses. Micro-business, the whole idea of it is to encourage small businesses, and that license type is to allow the little guys to get in, small businesses. What we're going to see now is, with these six, seven-figure properties, is the big companies coming in from outside the city and kind of snatching all those up, leaving the little guys with nothing to choose from. So if we zone micro-businesses differently and more favorably, allowing us to take some of the properties that are not as expensive, I think that would be good for the city to have a nice mix. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Good evening, my name is Alex Schneider, I'm at 1011 Knowles. Too many people work too hard for a long period of time, so the Royal Oak would have a master plan. So, somebody wants to make a macquarie out of that master plan. Somebody wants to destroy our single-family neighborhoods. Somebody wants to go sky-high with construction. And those proposals come in from Charlene Douglas. And I would like the Royal Oakers to know what's at stake here. A destruction of our city as we know it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Suzanne Chambers, Hudson Street. I want to make, my first opening comment would be, your disregard for the entire citizenry of Royal Oak is alarming to me. Actually, I'm alarmed by it. To think that you would feel, as representatives of the citizens of Royal Oak, that it's all right to make life-altering decisions in our behalf and not ask for our opinion or have a, an open meeting or a vote? What, why would you not do that? What are you afraid of? It is, this is to me, and I've lived here many, many years, and for, and at one moment you're speaking of inspecting all of the buildings, all the whole houses, I won't comment on your frowning at that, Mr. Fournier, but that was, that was a conversation at a meeting recently. And then you turn around and without any restrictions whatsoever, you're going to let people do whatever they want to structures on their property. It is just alarming to me. So, I, I had to, I absolutely had to comment on your disregard for this. I hope that the people that are home watching realize how little you care about what their feelings are. The taxpayers make it all work. So, good luck, and I certainly will be watching and praying to God that you come to your senses about this decision and think more about the residents, not just yourselves. Good night.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no one else, we'll close the public hearing on agenda items and, and non-agenda items, and we'll bring it back to the, this side of the commission. So, I know there's some, the next item up is the cell tower, so we'll get to that right away then. I know there's people here, obviously regarding the accessory dwellings, and you may not want to stay through that discussion, you're welcome to, obviously. But I do, I do want to make a couple of comments. This issue came up through a conversation with the Planning Commission at the last meeting. We, we were just curious about these accessory dwellings, what the rules were on them. We asked our planning department to help us understand what the current ordinance reads, you know, what, what it would take to make this happen or not happen. I'm hearing words like stealth, no transparency, and slip it in. Those are not, those are untrue statements, I'm sorry you feel that way, but we had an open meeting at the Planning Commission, the last meeting, there was no closed session, and publicly we asked for the planning director to bring it back. He prepared a staff report to, to, for us for this evening. So that's, that's how we got here. Nobody's trying to pull the wool over the public side. This is an important issue, and I think it's very important that you came here to, to speak about this. Mr. Twain, do you want to make any comments now, or do you want to wait till the item comes up?
No, I would welcome anyone that wants to stay for the discussion. I will have another staff member that actually put the report together come and go through the discussion. But what I want to make clear is, there's no ordinance proposed change on the agenda this evening. It's a staff report to the Planning Commission that says if, what's, what's currently allowed in the accessory dwelling, how they're currently dealt with, and some of the issues that you may want to consider if you change that. But there is no, you, you don't have the ability to vote on a tax amendment this evening, it's not even written in that format. And, and there is a public hearing process, there's a formal process you have to follow to do that. There are formal notifications that have to go out and post it. You don't even have the ability to vote on this tonight, it's an informational document. That's why it's listed under other business.
Thank you, Mr. Twain. And it should be noted, we're not encouraging these, we were simply asking for more information as these questions come up from time to time. So, again, we appreciate everyone-
But again, if you want to stick around for the discussion later, we'll have that discussion, and I'll have a staff member walk through it. But again, there, there is going to be no vote this evening, there is going to be no action taken. If the Planning Commission wants to give staff direction on something, that's up to them. This issue could actually die this evening if they don't want to proceed. So I, I, I want to make sure everybody's aware, there's not been any non-transparency on the part of this board. They've, they've asked for a report, we gave it to them, and that's the end of it.
Thank you. Okay, appreciate that, Mr. Twain. And next up is, this is under old business, and it's site plan 190918 to install 250-foot wireless communication support structure within off-street parking lot at 421 South Williams Street. Mr. Twain?
You do have the staff report in front of you for the site plan. I will remind the board members that the Planning Commission did consider the special land use permit request at its September 10th meeting for this proposal. You did hold the public hearing, closed that public hearing, and voted to approve the special land use permit. So the action that's left in front of you tonight is dealing with the associated site plan and the revised plan that was presented this evening from that meeting. They are proposing an additional greenbelt around the exterior of the site, along Fourth Street, along Williams Street. It includes a five-foot setback greenbelt landscaped area in that area. It includes an eight-foot wrought iron fence, and it does include what is labeled as a minimum of five-foot Arbor Vitae, placed five-foot on center. Approximately, there's 44 of them shown around that exterior area. In addition to that, what they're proposing to screen the actual lower level of the tower as well as the equipment sheds primarily, is an eight-foot vinyl fence that would simply go around the equipment area. That equipment area is some 40 feet by 50 feet, and within that includes the equipment. It also identifies two locations for future tenants, and it includes the, the tower base itself. That area is planned to be gravelled surface. The rest of the parking lot area, they're planning to seal coat and re-stripe the parking Those are the primary changes that were proposed to the site. You also have depictions of the elevation of the property as well as the fencing. Later in it, if I can get down to it here, because I'm moving kind of slow. Kind of gives you the view of what they're proposing. Landscape screening provisions are suggested in the ordinance, but they're up to your review and final determination as part of your site plan approval. So if you determine that this is acceptable as a site plan, landscape plan, you've made that determination. Terms of the staff report, they do need, currently need a zoning Board of Appeals action in regards to the setback from a residential zoned area and/or the right-of-way. The current ordinance calls for a fall zone area for the tower. As was discussed at the last meeting, you've got some information that this tower will collapse upon itself within a collapse zone, but it's still by ordinance, zoning ordinance is going to require that ZBA action. So that's the first item under the site plan memo. The second items are really standard contingencies, and then your determination on whether the landscaping and screening is compliant with the ordinance. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Twain. Any questions for Mr. Twain? Yes?
I just want to get a clarification here. So, we approved the special land use last month, but they, involved in that was permission to go to the zoning board, but they didn't do that yet, so they still have to go there? Is that what's happening?
Yes, they did go to the zoning board, and the zoning board postponed action- Yes, they did go to the zoning board, and the zoning board postponed action until you approved the site plan, was my understanding. So, they're rescheduled for Thursday's ZBA meeting.
Okay. Thanks.
I have a question, Mr. Twain. You, as a matter of protocol, you've provided us guidance on, should we consider an approval of the revised site plan? Can you explain what would happen if we denied the site plan?
Well, I think, given that you've approved the, the site as a special land use for this tower in operation, I would ask that you identify what your objections are to the site plan and tell the petitioner what those objections are so they could make modifications rather than simply denying it.
Okay. That helps. Ms. Beeky.
Just to be clear, so this mock-up photo that we see up there that has included this black fence and the arborvitae, the photo is not showing the, the engine room, so to speak, nor the vinyl fence, which are going to be at the base of this? Or are they there somewhere?
If you look through the wrought iron fence, you'll see the equipment and vinyl, vinyl fence are hidden behind that. So, you're not going to see the equipment shed. I don't know if there's a better view, but no. But practically speaking, both fences are proposed to be eight feet high.
Any other questions? Ms. Douglas.
And how tall is the cabinet?
I'll let them speak. I believe it's under that, 10. Dead feet.
That's what I thought. Any other questions for Mr. Twain? A petitioner's here.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Todd Wells. I'm a legal counsel for AT&amp;T, and I'm happy to address you tonight. In September, as Mr. Twain announced, we were, we received our special land use permit. Thank you for that approval. As you know from the presentation from Ms. Patricia Coats from Oakland County during our last meeting, this tower is designed to provide communication services for City of Royal Oak, City Fire Department, and Clemis, the Oakland County Court's law enforcement management information system. I know that Ms. Coats discussed in detail the Clemis system, the reason for the height, and candidly, the reason that we're here as AT&amp;T is when the tower was constructed out the door in 2004, we located our cellular antennas on that tower at 150 feet. We were notified that that tower was going to be removed at some point in the future, and therefore, we began discussions with the city and the county on an alternative location. Obviously, the immediate proximity of our AT&amp;T central office was appealing to the county and the city and met the radio frequency requirements for that tower. Thus, it was proposed to 250 feet, identical to what is behind you. And the proposal being that it would be located on AT&amp;T property. The tower is designed as a lattice tower, meaning that it is the most structurally sound and, more importantly, most easily co-locatable tower that, that exists. In my 30 years of experience, I've literally seen six, seven, and eight different carriers attach their equipment to such a tower, and it would meet all structural requirements. I mention that just because I think it is important that it would provide the City of Royal Oak with an opportunity for future wireless providers and others to say, that's, that's the tower that we'd like you to co-locate on. And under your ordinance, as you know, we have an absolute obligation to negotiate in good faith and, and permit the co-location of those devices. I also have tonight with Chief, Donahue is here. He'd be happy to answer any questions from the perspective of the city or from the police department. And we would simply ask for your approval on the site plan tonight, and so that we can move forward. As, as mentioned, we will appear before the zoning board of appeals on Thursday night at 7:00 PM. If you have any questions, be happy to address them.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Casada?
Yes, you may have heard one of the speakers. What is your position on the proposal relative to the alternative design requirement in the ordinance? That's 770-88, C1D8.
Right. And it, so the, the real issue is, is that this is a tower that's primarily being constructed for public safety. This is a tower that also, under your ordinance, must be co-locatable. When you get into specific design criteria, I know we discussed the Pine Tree Tower at 14 Mile North to Lake Road last time, you get into extreme limitations on the ability to co-locate. You limit the opportunity to co-locate. The other reality in my 30 years of experience is, is that it's very hard to stealth a tower. This city has been accustomed to having a tower on the top of the building here and next door for many, many, many years. It's something that has become usual. In fact, in many of the communities, not only in Oakland County, but in Wayne and all over southeastern Michigan, it is very common to see a large Clemis or that type of style antenna located in proximity to a municipal hall or a city hall, municipal building. What tends to happen in my experience is the minute you attempt to make something look like something that it's not, it ends up drawing more attention to it. And the Eagan, Minnesota example, I was involved personally in that tower. The issue with that tower is, at least within the industry, it's become somewhat of a, it's become somewhat of a white elephant, if you will. People often feel that that tower sticks out far more than it ever would have had it been designed in a more traditional style. At the end of the day, what provides the city and the county with the most opportunities to attract the most co-locators on that facility, if that's the desire of other providers, is a lattice-type tower, and that's why we've proposed what we've proposed.
Follow-up question?
Please.
I appreciate what you're saying. You wouldn't disagree, then? It sounds like that, that your proposal does not meet the requirement of this part of the ordinance.
The, the proposal, what I, what I would say to you is, as it relates to that specific language, which I've reviewed extensively, the issue, the issue becomes one of what is the ultimate benefit for the city? And in this circumstance, as the good folks in, in West Bloomfield learned, a stealth design is not a design that is in the best interest of the city. They would tell you that today.
I wouldn't call a giant sequoia stealth. My opinion, I worked there when they put that up.
And I was involved in that as well, and encouraged anyone who would listen to not go down that route. And I was passed it this weekend, and it's unfortunately quite obtrusive and not what was ultimately desired at the time.
Okay. Other questions? Ms. Douglas.
So, our, in our, at our last meeting, the tenor, I think of the opinions at this table, was that we were looking for some pretty comprehensive landscaping on this site. AT&amp;T is going to benefit financially from this site. You're in a crucial part of our downtown, and honestly, I don't think a line of arborvitae around a perimeter meets kind of the spirit of what we asked for. What do you say to that?
I, I, we're certainly open to adding additional, additional landscaping. The problem becomes, is that in that environment where you've got a five-foot span of, of open ground, if you will, then the decorative fence, it becomes somewhat difficult in how much, how compact you get with the landscaping. We're certainly welcome, and you can certainly condition, as part of your approval, that we add additional shrubbery as, as directed by the, by the commission. We have no, no objection to that, but we're also trying to present for you a proposal which realistically, in a couple of years, will grow effectively and will grow to an appropriate height and span so that we, we're not finding a number of bushes that simply cannot live in that limited strip environment. That's what we were trying to accomplish, and that's, comes from many, many years of experience of doing this in all the cities all over southeastern Michigan. We try to present for you what the best option is. Honestly, Mayor Protam, if, if you said we'd like 20 more arborvitae, we'll put 20, it's, it's not a cost issue, it's trying to use our experience in trying to provide for the city the very best result at the end of the day. And that's what we were trying to accomplish with that proposal. Again, you can condition shrubbery as you desire.
Also, the height of the fencing that you propose around the unit, as you maybe heard me ask a moment ago, what's inside is 10 feet tall, at least the cabinetry, and yet your fence is eight feet tall. Why wouldn't you go 10 feet tall?
The, there, there's really two reasons for it. One is, as you walk by, you know, in your own backyard perhaps, Mayor Protam, there was an eight-foot fence perhaps, and, and you notice that as you walk, you don't always see what's directly behind it. If it is a concern of this commission that we make that a 10-foot vinyl fence, we'll, we'll do that. I mean, again, we're, what we're trying to do is give you the benefit of our experience. What we found is when we make that wall, excuse me, that vinyl fence too tall, then it sticks out more than it needs to. And what it really, it, what it doesn't accomplish is the aesthetic issues that we're trying to accomplish with the site, you know, to conceal that equipment. That's, that was our objective. But if, again, as a condition of your approval, if you'd like a 10-foot vinyl fence, and if you'd like to suggest a color, I mean, I'm not trying to overanalyze this, but we, we suggested a tan vinyl fence, coming again from our past experience. If you felt that dark green was a more appropriate, we can do that. And we would certainly do that as, as a condition of your approval. That's, that's not the issue. It's, it's not a cost issue. It's trying to give you the very best finished product that we can so that it looks good not only once it's installed, but for years to come.
Thank you.
Mr. Casada?
Either way.
Mr. Casada, then Ms. Beeky.
Your, your experience, what I think I just heard you say, is your experience also tells you that it's difficult to grow the plants in a five-foot strip. So, my question is, why isn't it bigger than five? Wouldn't that, wouldn't that militate in favor of making it bigger than five feet?
It actually, it's interesting, even, even if you add, even when you add some type of water supply system, it doesn't, the, the depth really doesn't, what happens is, is that because that's a pedestrian area, there, there's a lot of, a lot of different things that get into the soil. And I don't mean cigarettes, and I don't mean spilled beer, but, you know, other things that blow around in any city. And so, what we found is, we found that the five-foot width really works the best and achieves our goal, but if you attempt to put too much landscaping into that five-foot area, what you find is, is that the plants may not survive, may have stunted growth. Obviously, we're responsible to replace the plants if they don't grow, and we will do that. That's already a condition of your ordinance. But we found that that's really the most acceptable. To move in further, we could certainly do that, councilman. It's just a question of, is that going to achieve any real benefit? And in our experience, we found that it doesn't.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Beeky?
I guess I have two questions. My first question, which we didn't ask last time, is, is there, what is the reason that this tower has to be on the ground and not on the top of the AT&amp;T building like the current towers are?
Sure. It's a, it's a structural issue. As you can imagine, the caisson, the, the foundations, that those three legs will go down into the ground, will go down 30? 35 feet. I was going to say 35 feet, so I'm glad he's, 35 feet. To take, we would literally have to completely rebuild that building to allow it to support any type of structure on the roof.
So, this tower significantly, because of the significant height difference in the, the current towers to this tower?
Correct. And, and, and the other distinction is, just to be clear, is, is that the height of that tower that's required is a, is a requirement of Oakland County and of, and of your police and fire for it to work, as, as Patricia explained last time.
We discussed that last time.
Yes.
I guess following on my colleague's points and, and the, the discussion last time, this was before us, again, this is the prime downtown area. It's on the ground now instead of on buildings. And what we discussed is, and this is a step in the right direction, I'll give you that, it's got some green, it's got a wrought iron fence. Personally, I think a, a brick wall instead of the vinyl would be much more attractive. But what we talked about from a private-public partnership perspective, because this is going to be here a long time, and it's in our, and it's our main area in our downtown, is something that would be more akin to something where you would edge in that fence at a diagonal into a parklet at the corner, something that's going to be a community benefit, not just arborvitae that are on the side of the road anywhere. And so, this seems like a step in the right direction, but it's kind of meek, if I would say. And so, again, we made the agreement, looking at public safety, that the tower itself, we understand, is a necessity, but I think this could be gone, a lot more could be done to make this site something that would be respectable for the community and for AT&amp;T, considering that's going to be right there in that prime spot. Again, the parking lot hasn't been great either, but this is going to be a much more permanent fixture, and we understand, again, not many cars park there, so there's a lot of room for improvement. And also, we talked about something that would be more like a three-story type visual, so you have at least two, not something that would just be at a six-foot eye level in terms of masking the tower, which we know we're going to be able to see from high windows and such, but from the street level, we should get something better than that.
The, you know, certainly, certainly there's a, there's a number of options. I mean, we can, if, if it's the desire of the commission, we can certainly cut into the corner of that and, and place a park bench or something. That would be something that would have to be acceptable, of course, to the commission, but also, you know, to the planning department.
Obviously.
Obviously, and we would not be opposed to doing that. The, the issue as to the amount of height or amount of blockage on the, on the actual equipment enclosure is what I'll call that 40-by-50 area. We, we do not have a problem increasing the height of the fence. The higher you go above the wrought, the wrought iron fence, which is going to be the one closest to the sidewalks, the more it's going to be visible.
I'm talking about green, green things, not the fence per se.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I'm visually for the person who's walking by. I don't mean a fence, I mean something that's aesthetically helping the neighborhood. So, I'm talking about green trees or other things like that.
And, and, you know, again, we could, you know, as, as, as we discussed and as we looked at, you have a, an example, it's not a dictate, but an example of a, of a type of plant. The problem, again, becomes, in our experience, when you start adding trees and arborvitae and other greenery within that same landscape belt, it, it tends to get very crowded. So, while initially you may think that that's a, that, that's a positive development, what tends to happen over a period, a short period of years, is that a lot of it dies out. It can be replaced, but then you're replacing it by digging down into existing root balls of the other shrubberies that are still growing. And so, it's, it's just a, it's just a balance. It's, it's trying to come up with the, with the right amount. If the commission is of the opinion that they'd like to see a 10-foot fence, that they'd like to see additional greenery, an additional X number of shrubs, placement of trees perhaps, or a few trees, and/or a cutout where we push back in the corner and perhaps set a bench or something appropriate, we can, we can certainly do that as a condition, and we'd be happy to do that. But we're also obviously sensitive to the time constraints of, you know, trying to move this project forward to meet the requirements of Clemis and the city. Again, we're, we're transmitting at 150 feet there, we'll be transmitting 150 feet here. This is more, I believe, more of a community benefit approach from AT&amp;T, and that's what we're trying to accomplish. So, we're very open. It is, it is not commissioner, a dollars and cents issue. It's just trying to offer the best solutions based upon our years of building a lot of these compounds.
Thank you. Mr. Gordak.
I, I believe it was Commissioner Klooster that brought up last time, and locating the tower closer to the AT&amp;T building as it is close to the building to the east?
The, the, yeah.
Why can't you put the tower the same distance away from AT&amp;T than you can the other one?
And I'm going to, I'm going to look to Brad Riggs, who, who is our engineer, just for that explanation, because I don't want to give you incorrect information.
I believe your catch basin was in the way, was your reply.
Right, but the catch basin is not a, a structure that can't be moved when they tear up the whole parking lot and put in 30-foot caissons.
Brad Riggs, I was here last time. Yeah, it is the catch basin, but in addition to that, they travel through there with trucks. So, this is still a parking lot. It's their parking lot, and they, they access it from the street to the west, come through, offload or unload, and drive through. That's one of the reasons. Thank you.
I guess, like, you're putting 30-foot caissons in the ground to support this thing? If, if this site's going to be tore up considerably, you could move the catch basin and move that tower into the corner, and that's what I would expect to be done to the site. And if your trucks have to park 15 feet differently to load and unload, then that would be a sacrifice I would expect to be made. And I'll also echo some of, and... And I'll also echo some of, and Bickie's comments about the landscaping, experience putting towers up with a row of arborvitae, to me, is laughable, and for you to defend it, and a five-foot easement there to hold it, and say that if we make it bigger, then it's going to be trouble because it's too dense and plants are going to die. There's beautiful landscaping all over the place that we see around developments, and you could do a, have a lot better job and make a, make a two-tiered type structure here, where you have a raised berm with trees, and really make it look nice. And to argue that, that the experience that, that that can't happen is, I think, disappointing. Thank you.
Mr. Goddard? Other comments?
Oh, question.
Yes, Ms. Douglas.
I guess perhaps Mr. Twing, who owns the property on the west, northwest wedge of this site? That is, there's a fence that cuts off the angle. Do you own the property up to the squared-off part of the land, or is that public?
If the survey's right, it's up there, they own it.
Yeah.
So you own it, you've just chosen to fence off, fence it off, cut the corner off, rather than fencing right to the corner?
Correct. That's correct.
Yeah, if the survey's correct, the property line's showing going out to a square, but...
Okay.
If it's the inclination of the commission, we're happy to add additional landscaping. We're happy to increase the height of the fence. If you'd like us to consider, if you'd like to see a two-tiered landscape system, we would be willing to do that. Those all could be placed as conditions on your approval, and we would abide by those conditions. Again, it's, contrary to what anybody may think, it's not a, it's not a cost issue, it's a, it's a practical issue, and we're just trying to present the best offer possible.
Ms. Douglas.
So, no, I'll yield to Mr. Klooster. Mr. Klooster.
Yes, you've, you've mentioned conditions of approval many times, so I understand that you're looking to get approval tonight. Can you speak to some of your time, you mentioned some time constraints, can you speak to your timeframe as to what those constraints are and what you're targeting?
Chief, do you want to, do you want to address that?
Sure. I think we have a, I want to make it clear, and I think I did last week, there is a deadline looming of, the police department is substantial completion in June of next year, the end of June. We're moving in in July, and, well, I should say, we're moving in July, assuming we have a communication tower set up. I think it would be a travesty if that building's built and we can't move in because, you know, we'd have to figure that out. I don't know what the answer is, but the current tower is not coming down until a new tower's up. And so that date is coming up, and I think the park, I would hate to have the citizens denied their park for an additional season or whatever because of this issue. So that's the, the deadline. I think it's worth repeating, AT&amp;T doesn't need a 250-foot tower, Oakland County does. The city is not a part of this. It's Oakland County radio system, the city's out of the tower business, and the county has the lease. If, for some reason, this doesn't work out, we're back to the drawing board, and I don't see any way we're going to get this resolved. So without question, the issue of what's going to happen, and, you know, the comment kept coming up, well, we're going to have a tower in the middle of our park, except we're going to have a tower in a police station, because the police stations with all that stuff's housed. So, you know, that's our timeframe, and I think from a construction standpoint, I guess Brad would talk, I believe he needs a minimum of 90 days, 45 days of prep, and then 40, 45 days beyond that to get the materials. Is that correct?
Yeah. So ordering the steel and all the components go into the tower, they're not going to do that until the tower's approved. We have our building permitted, we're ready to go. Steel is, for this, this massive tower, as it's been called, will take some time to, you know, engineer, put together, ship, so we're looking at 90 days at a minimum to get that after we're all done, and we have all the necessary documents to send to the tower companies. So we're probably 120 days out, and then 45 days to build it. So, takes some time.
So I have a few comments. First of all, I'm not comfortable with having the planning commission's backs against the wall because of time constraints. I think that 30 days just went by from last month, where you gave us a plan that is disappointing. We asked for something creative, innovative, special, something that Royal Oak deserves. We asked for masonry wall, a landing spot for people to, you know, enjoy that corner, something much nicer to look at, inviting to be a part of, and you brought us a plan that has arborvitae that are just not, it's unacceptable, it's not what we talked about last month. So 30 days goes by, and here's the plan that we're given, and you're asking us to make a decision on that tonight, and I think you've heard from a few of us anyway, that this plan is not what we expected to get back. We expected to get something special back, and so I think that's disappointing. Mr. Walsh, you talked about that you'd be willing to put forth a number of options. Well, we asked for that last month, so, you know, we may expect that again. And then you also made a comment, which I found was interesting, about that you have a specialty in building these compounds. That's exactly what we're talking about, is this compound look. So we're trying to avoid that here. This is a unique part of Royal Oak, and a lot of people will be affected by that. So we just expected something a little bit different, a little bit better. We certainly understand the constraints the chief and his department are under. It's an important project for them, and a supporting project for Royal Oak, and for AT&amp;T, for that matter. So my other comments are about the landscaping and the opportunities. Five feet swath is a difficult environment for any plant. If you were a plant, would you want to live in a five-foot swath with dirt? No. So I'm not sure what constraints are on site to peel back some of the hard surface and make it a more pervious and inviting environment for plant. You know, I'm not a landscape architect, so I wouldn't possibly want to try to design that, but if you have options and opportunities to peel back some of that environment and create a more inviting environment for plant materials and some masonry, I think that's kind of what we were talking about the last meeting. And I know you weren't here, but that's what we were trying to convey. So those are my comments. Ms. Douglas?
Yes, surely AT&amp;T has landscape architects under contract somewhere, because you have a lot of other buildings that are very prettily landscaped. And, I mean, I think if you go to a landscape architect and challenge them to make this attractive and discreet in this urban environment, they are going to be eager to offer you some creative solutions beyond a row of arborvitae. I'm looking, you're, this is a big corporation. There are imaginative people there who I think can solve this problem and bring us something. When we're not landscape architects, I don't think it's our job to tell you that we want 25, you know, sawgrass and another 13 of whatever plants. That's, that's not, you know, not our expertise. But, I mean, I, I think you're hearing us here, we are looking for something creative and innovative, something that AT&amp;T could enter into, you know, awards competitions, something that you can be proud of, not just a row of arborvitae slapped up around the property. I'm going to make a motion to postpone this item until the applicant can come back with a much improved plan.
There's a motion on the table to postpone, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Casada, is there discussion on this motion?
I just want to make one comment. I just want to also emphasize that, I think, speaking for all of us, we understand that the tower itself is going to look like a tower. We understand that. We were never asking last week, or last month, excuse me, about dressing up the tower unless there was an aesthetic way to do so. This is all about the landscaping and the overall look of the site.
Before you, before you vote, can I ask for some clarity? I mean, go ahead and keep your discussion, but in order to give them some additional direction, I'd like to ask a few questions. But go ahead.
Mr. Goddard first, and then...
I was kind of trying to head in that direction, and I think that's, that's very important, because I feel like this is where we were at a month ago, when, when we did, I think, make some very clear suggestions, and one of the ones that I don't find acceptable is the fact that we can't move this tower further away from Fourth Street. And maintaining the current use of the building so that a truck can park there and unload, I think you can make some other considerations for, you got it, like, the base of it eight feet away from, from the VFW hall. I want to see it moved closer to the AT&amp;T building, as one of the specifics that I'd like to see an option brought up. If you, if you got a drain that you got to move and a truck that has to park 10 feet different, then that's one of the considerations I'd like to see. And I'm reluctant to support this motion on the very fact that we asked for some stuff and it didn't come through. I'll make one more comment at this point in time. If this wasn't our good city manager and a requirement for, you know, a police communication tower with the county, we wouldn't be considering, if a petitioner comes up in front of us and say, hey, I need you to pass this plan because I'm, I'm late. We don't use that as criteria. We shouldn't be backed into a bad plan because we're not provided with good options. Thank you.
Mr. Twing?
Well, I guess, I, to stay on that topic, is, does the rest of the planning commission want to see the tower moved south? That's Mr. Goddard's singular question, and is that a direct or consensus of the committee? Because what I don't want to see them do is leave it where it's at, for whatever reasons. So what, what I guess I'm asking for in clarity is, an eight-foot fence tall enough? We've talked about a better landscape plan, but are, do you want a 10-foot wall around it, and is it vinyl, or is it masonry? There are certain things that you could give them specific direction on and be done with. Do you, do you want a 10-foot green belt with staggered planting? Or do you want, you said five isn't enough, but is, do you want 10? Do you want them to landscape out to the corner, which they own? I believe the fence is pushed back for site clearance of the intersection, so vehicles pulling up there, I believe that's probably why it's back. But do you want them to just simply rip the concrete out and landscape that corner and put a bench there? Those are the sorts of clarity items that, rather than individual commentary, is there a consensus on, do you want the tower moved? And if you do, say so. Otherwise, we'll be back here again. And that's where I think they're coming from, is make a motion and tell us what you want to see revised. And they'll revise it. He's said the money isn't the issue, so give them, give them some clarity on, if five feet's not good enough, do you want 10? That's, I guess that's the clarity I would look for from staff, too.
Tim, are there any zoning restrictions to the amount of pavement that they can remove to create an impervious site with more appealable landscaping and other features?
Well, there is no requirement for them to put any pervious soil in, or things anyways, and this is a parking lot for AT&amp;T. This tower is a leased area, it's not, it's a separate entity on it. So AT&amp;T still has its operation of this site, so they're still going to want to put vehicles on this site, park on this site. And while I know there's a community benefit, there's a limit there on what AT&amp;T is, they still want to use the site for their operational purposes.
I think what I'm asking is, if AT&amp;T comes back and says, we only need to park two trucks occasionally and four cars, we can peel back, I don't know, 15, 20 feet, and we can create this pocket park, and, I mean, I don't want them to come back and then you say, no, they can't do that. So that's what I'm looking for some direction on. Is there, is there a limit to how much they can peel back, if that's what they want to do?
There's a limit in the sense of what they're willing to do at AT&amp;T.
Okay.
But, but for zoning. But, I mean, if you, if you told them as part of the approval, you want a new drainage system in here, I'm not sure they're going to go ahead and do that, because they're only digging up a 40-by-50-foot area. Stormwater detention in the CBD is exempt. They're not required to provide any.
Is parking a requirement for this site?
No.
Okay.
So I, again, it goes back to my comment, is what would be a revision that, and you don't have to approve it tonight, but what I don't want to do is, from generalized comments, and come back.
Okay.
And in particular, the one that concerns me is moving the tower. If you want the tower moved, that's something I like to have very clear.
Mr. Casada, and then Ms. Bickie.
Okay, so I'm going to say that I thought we gave clear direction last time. Mr. Goddard brought up last time the alternative design for the tower, and we had a little discussion of it. And for me, I said, you know what, the thing is, we don't want to see it. So I wasn't concerned about the lattice, because what we asked for was a beautiful park-like installation, green space, where we wouldn't be, we would be screened from the tower. And so that's what I thought the direction was, and that's the direction I'm sticking with, and if we don't get it next time, then I'm going to go back to this provision about the alternative design, and I'm going to vote against it based on it's not an alternative design. Because my, my, my direction last time was, you don't have to give us an alternative design, but you're going to screen it with a, with a green space that's very impressive, and trees even, not, not just shrubbery, but trees, was the thought. And if you have to take 20 feet off of the, of the asphalt to create that sort of a space, that's what we want. And if you have, and if you have to do that, and that means you have to move the tower, then I think you should have to do that. But that's what we discussed, that's what I discussed, that's my basis for it, so I hope that's clear direction.
Ms. Bickie?
I guess I just wanted to echo something similar, that this is, this is, I hesitate a little bit, and again, in specific instructions, as far as five feet, 10 feet, again, five feet is too little, I guess I wouldn't hesitate about that, but again, there's a landscape person to look at it, but, but exactly what Mr. Casada just said, we're looking at, talking about something with trees and a setback that's a little bit further. As far as moving the tower, I don't, I don't have a perspective on that from looking at it here, whether it's a few feet back or not. I'm more concerned about the overall look and aesthetic of the corner, and so I think this is quite insufficient, and I just want to echo what was stated. And as far as things, to be, a place to sit or a parklet, again, that would be nice, but it's more about the trees or something, that the whole image of the space would be better than this.
So some further direction would be to find a landscaping architect or an engineer who's an expert in green infrastructure. There's a lot of wonderful urban environments that can be created using green infrastructure, tree boxes. There's a very, a lot of techniques that are, that are, that are used and are successful in these urban environments. So if you, you know, I'm not going to sit here and give you names, but there's plenty of folks in southeast Michigan that are doing this work right now, consulting firms. Ms. Douglas?
So we have a motion on the floor to postpone. We can approve that, and once we approve that, we can still entertain a motion to give them some specific direction, correct?
Okay.
So finish the postponement, postpone first.
So let's call for the vote. All those in favor to postpone, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, six to one to postpone. Okay, do we want to further, Ms. Douglas?
I'm going to try a motion here. If parts of it fail, we can recraft it, but, but let's take a stab at it. I'm going to ask that the green belt be 10 feet rather than be at least 10 feet rather than five feet, with staggered plantings of varied heights, with a goal towards screening the site. That the, I accept the vinyl fence around the installation, but I would like it to be...
Excuse me, there's a motion on the table, and please...
10 feet tall. 10 feet tall. I do not have an objection to the location, but if we find the motion fails because people do want to move closer to the building, we can introduce a new motion to put it closer to the building. And I would like them to install at least a bench on the northwest corner. Bonus points if they do something more than just a bench.
Okay, so there's a motion from Ms. Douglas to create a 10-foot green belt with staggered plantings, a bench, a 10-foot tall vinyl fence? And did I miss?
The wrought iron fence is okay?
And the, I'm sorry, and the wrought iron fence is acceptable.
Okay, is there support for that motion?
When does the discussion come?
No support.
Well, I have a question, do you mind? It's a lot of stuff, can we reread it?
Yes. In no particular order, I want a bench on the corner. I want a 10-foot vinyl fence around the installation. I want a minimum 10-foot landscaping belt with staggered materials with a goal towards blocking the site. And, oh, and the wrought iron fence as proposed.
Any support? No support? Motion fails. Mr. Goddard?
I'd like to make a motion. All of the above that Commissioner Sharland Douglas mentioned, amending the 10-foot to be a masonry structure. And I'd like to see a minimum of a 12-foot band of landscaping. And I want to see the tower moved closer to, let's see if I can come up with a dimension. From, I apologize, from the site plan, how far away is the tower structure from the VFW hall?
Just referring to...
Because this is a driveway.
Okay. I'm talking about moving this triangle to...
Okay.
And that's saying, put it that distance away.
Okay.
I'm going to move it. Right now they get centered from here.
Five feet from the VFW hall?
Yep, to the fence.
Okay. They've got a 20-foot wide utility there easement. I want it within five feet of that utility easement, so 25 feet from the building.
Which building?
The AT&amp;T building.
25 feet north of the AT&amp;T building?
That's correct.
I'll take it to the engineers and see.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table by Mr. Goddard to replace the 10-foot vinyl suggestion with a masonry wall, a 12-foot band for green space, a bench, keep the wrought iron fence, and locate the tower 25 feet to the north of the AT&amp;T building.
Was it a 12-foot wall or a 12-foot band?
Band.
Band.
It was a 10-foot masonry wall rather than a vinyl wall. Did I get that?
It sounds good.
Okay, do you want me to repeat that?
Please.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Goddard to include a 10-foot masonry wall, a 12-foot band for landscaping and green space, locate the tower 25 foot north of the AT&amp;T building, maintain the wrought, maintain the wrought iron fence? Okay. And locate a bench. On the northwest corner.
Does your 12-foot of landscaping require materials of various heights with a goal towards screening the property?
Everything you said, yes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a second by Ms. Douglas. Is there a discussion? Mr. Casada?
I have another question about clarification. Ms. Douglas was, a minimum 10-foot, is your motion a minimum 12-foot?
Yes. Ban, okay, they can go more.
Ms. Bickie?
My question is, if for some engineering reason the tower cannot be moved, that's something more than just the drain, would we accept it not being moved? Would there be, if there's, I mean, it has to be like something that's not just...
Well, you're not approving it, you're just giving them direction of what you'd like to see.
And then they can come back and tell us why not.
If they have a legitimate engineering reason and they come back and say they can't do it, then you'll consider it as part of that.
Okay.
I'd like to hear from them on that now, but...
It'll be incorporated into the other. And the other question I guess I have is, would it be feasible, like when we say screening, or maybe I'll just make this comment, that we're talking about plants that grow 30 feet tall, that there's trees, something that grows taller than...
They're going to give you a landscape plan for the 12-foot green.
Right, what I'm suggesting is, this doesn't come back to be things that are varied, yet they're all small and not tree-like.
That's a good suggestion.
I would like clarification on the landscaping, too, or suggestion to your landscaping.
It was what the chair started with, you know, the staggered, I'm not a landscaping expert, but Commissioner Tabiki with, you know, some tree of sizable structure. It's hard to forget specifics, you know, 20-foot evergreen. I want six of them. You know, I don't know what fits on that site and what's going to work and what's going to look good.
Okay.
But what we want is something that's going to look good and that's tall and varied and has some depth to it.
Survive in that environment.
Yeah.
And a mix of maybe deciduous and evergreen, if you want to make it, you know?
Okay. Mr. Kloster?
Yeah, just as if we're talking about the landscaping, I would suggest a mix of evergreen and deciduous and target multi-seasonal color, so it's not all green all the time. Make it a public amenity for that landscape environment.
Any other discussion on this motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Chair, could I potentially hear from this gentleman that's raising his hand and why he might not want to move the tower?
To the microphone, yeah.
Can you draw where you'd like to have it? You're 25 feet in, it's not a square building, so...
I'm not looking at the building, I'm looking at the leg of a tower. And you have a 20-foot wide utility easement.
Access easement.
Yep. I give you another five feet on that, and then I want a leg of a tower starting right there. Is that clear?
Or enclosure or leg of the tower?
Leg of the tower. I want the tower there. Then you can move your structures and buildings around any way you want within that little cement masonry 10-foot wall and structure. So if you want to move that little RF building with your backup generator and stuff like that to the other side of it, that's fine, but I want the tower leg 25 feet off of...
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I can do it with CAD, but I can't do it just talking to me. Just trying to clarify 25 feet for which...
That's five feet, it's 25 feet.
If it were a straight wall, it wouldn't be an issue.
Then you could put the building over here.
We'll lay it out and I'll send it to you.
Send it to him.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we've got new business. This is a site plan to expand an existing one-story commercial building with a second story addition for dwelling unit at 915 South Washington Avenue. Mr. Twing?
The petitioner's proposing, this site's just a little bit south of the OCC parking lot. It's in the midst, used two district. As you indicated, they're proposing to add a second story to the existing one-story commercial building. That second story would be for a two-bedroom dwelling unit. The site plan indicates that there would be a total of five parking spaces provided. Under the current review of the plan, the first floor would have approximately 1,070 square feet of usable space, and that would require five parking spaces. The dwelling unit would require an additional two. The basement, as proposed and shown and discussed with staff, is not usable space, and so we're not assigning any parking requirement to that at this point. But if they ever wanted to use it, there'd be an additional shortage of parking for that basement space. So the first item, or the second item you'll see there is the zoning board of appeals granting necessary variances, which include the off-street parking. In addition to that, the driveway leading in from Washington does not meet the current zoning ordinance standards for 20 feet in width. So the second one is in the maneuvering aisle widths in the back are not to code. So the second one would be dealing with the aisle widths. There was initially a portion of the building that, or is a portion of the building that sticks out into the right-of-way of South Washington. Based on revised plan, they're taking that off, but we've left a note so that that portion that sticks out into the right-of-way is removed when they build the second floor. Third item is in regards to whether the planning commission wants the, two of the five parking spots designated as a reserve for the dwelling unit, or whether it was a first-come, first-served arrangement. The fourth item is in regards to the screening wall that's proposed along the alley, simply so that it, the design of it and the materials match the building materials. And the remainder are standard contingencies for site plans.
Mr. Twing, any questions for Mr. Twing? Is the petitioner here?
I'm Chester Stempian, architect for the project. It's a remodel of an existing dry cleaner that had been there for many years. We're trying to enhance that building as much as we can. The north side of the building is right on a property line, so all I could recommend is maybe a stucco facade, cultured stone, which would extend maybe an inch into that property. The Washington facade will be completely redone, and the, there was a drive-through that projected into that side drive of three feet, which I propose that we remove to allow for better traffic flow back to the parking lot. You could get to the parking lot through the alley, but it has been used to get to the parking lot from Washington, even though it's not the required width. But we would like to maintain that. There was a garage addition to the existing building, which we're proposing to remove to allow us to get the extra parking. So in essence, we're trying to maximize the use of that site with the first level being retail, could be an insurance agency or small office. And the second level could accommodate a two-bedroom apartment unit. And we're asking approval for the parking, which is also possible to have parking on Washington, although the ordinance requires a certain number beyond site. So in essence, we're asking for approval for what was presented.
Thank you. Mr. Casada?
Good evening, Mr. Stempian. Got a couple of questions. First question, maybe this is for both Tim and yourself. You don't have a use right now, you say you're going to make the ground floor some sort of an office, but you don't know what it's going to be. You don't have a tenant.
At this point, it's speculative. There was some feedback from the real estate that it could be an insurance agency or something like that, but nothing tangible. And typically, people will not extend their request to have a space unless they see it, so it's open at this point.
Where I'm going with this is that, so given what I just heard, and I don't know if it's exactly in the part, there's seven spaces needed, right?
Yes.
And they would have to get a variance for the apartment and the rest for the business, yes.
Okay, I'm not sure I want this to happen, but this is a question. If you don't need the driveway to Washington, can he park, can they park cars on it?
No, you can't stadium-style vehicles.
Okay. But they, I guess my question is, okay, can't stadium-style vehicles there, but there's a space there that's, you could park, if you parked a car and they made a space there and they didn't do it stadium, I'm just wondering.
With all access from the public alley?
I'm just asking the question.
Because it can't really serve as a driveway and parking.
Okay, that's what I'm asking about. Second question, what about, it looks like you're proposing a screening wall only facing to the east. Is there a requirement, are you proposing a screening wall where, facing north, or is that not a requirement?
No, the only place the screening walls are required are adjacent to the public rights-of-way, to the public alley. There is no requirement for a screening wall between parking lots. North of it's another parking lot, so there is no requirement there.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Kloster?
Do you know what the width of that existing driveway is?
Well, the lot is 40 feet wide, the building is 27 feet, so that's all that's available.
Mr. Goddard?
We don't approve parking variances. The petitioner would have to go in front of zoning to...
Yeah, that's the second contingency on your site plan is going to the ZBA.
How many are we deficient here?
Pardon me?
How many, is it three? Three spots are we deficient?
Well, two under the current configuration of the first floor being about a little over 1,000 square feet being used for retail or office. That's going to generate five. The residential unit above is two. If they made some other proposal to put some other use in the first floor, then that number may change. But based on what they're presenting, they would end up going to the ZBA for a waiver of two spots.
Which seems reasonable. I like the plan, the current building looks a little, looks like it's crying out for a second story. I don't see the need for the screen wall in the public alley. Those things tend to kind of get knocked down and make it hard to park in there. I would make a motion as presented, deleting that 30-inch screen wall in the alley.
Is there support?
Go ahead.
Support?
Support by Mr. Casada. Mr. Twing?
Well, if you want the screen wall gone, that's fine. The only caution I would make is that tends to define where the public alley is versus where the parking is. You'll have people that'll park in the alley. But if you don't want it, I totally, not arguing for it.
Mr. Casada?
Well, I would just make the comment, that's the old Wally cleaners there, I'm very familiar with this. That's another parking lot across the alley. That's Oakland Community College parking lot across the alley. So the screening and the headlights aren't facing that way, so the utility of the screening wall would only be to demarc the alleyway, because it doesn't really provide any screening of the headlights. So that's why I'm supporting.
Ms. Douglas?
I'd accept bollards there in place of a screening wall, a little more durable, not as vulnerable as a brick wall.
Just no space to do much of anything there. And actually, that screen wall would be a hindrance when you're pulling in and out. It's 20 feet long, you want to make a turn to get out into the alley, you have to back up straight 20 feet. You have to back up straight 20 feet just to get around that screen wall. And who would see it other than to define the parking lot?
So there's a motion on the table to approve minus the screen wall. And there's been support in this motion. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Kloster?
Yeah. Mr. Twing, can you comment on, does the planning department have any sort of stance on public alleys being used as parking lot, drive aisles, or drive access only?
Using public alleys as?
Yeah. So in this instance, at best, you have a one-way, a width for a one-way drive off of-
Right. A driveway is, the minimum you'd want would be 12 feet. They have that. We have numerous situations where the public alleys are used for circulation, so I don't see any issue with that. We've got several situations on smaller lots on 11 Mile and other mile roads where you have, where people are going to come in off the main street, be it Washington, and then circulate out onto the public alley. So I think it flows okay. They'll need to put some signage up that, on the back of the building that says, "Don't enter," going westbound. But if somebody did it, there's not going to be a lot of enforcement on it. They might beat people. But practically speaking, I would not want to see it go away, so.
Any other discussion on the motion? Mr. Kloster?
I would just like to see a contingency added to indicate that signage on the site plan.
What signage would that be?
The, the one-way traffic signage, do-not-enter traffic signage. So on South Washington, it's, it's one-way entry from the parking lot of the do-not-enter.
So they can't come into the driveway from Washington?
They come in off of Washington, but they cannot exit back out onto Washington.
It's one-way going in.
This exit through the alley.
I'd be okay with that.
Friendly amendment's been accepted. Any other discussion? Mr. Casada?
Only this is a mixed-use project, project in a mixed-use zoned area, so it's good.
It's nice.
Okay. Let's call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved. Thank you. Item number 200 new business is a preliminary report to establish a Royal Oak Farmers Market Historic District. And Mr. Twing has prepared a site, or excuse me, a report. Some backup. Mr. Twing, do you want to?
Yeah. The statute requires that when the Historic District Study Committee prepares a report that, under the state law, to designate historic, local historic districts and the city ordinance that the planning commission see it, review it, and provide a recommendation on that proposed district. And so that's why it's in front of you, to review the preliminary report. Basically, what I would point out is the, whether or not the planning commission supports the designation of the Farmers Market as a historic district. Obviously, is your determination. Where this started from, as I understand, the city commission asked staff, or asked the Historic District Study Committee, to look at the designation of this building for a local district. I think from the planning department staff, our only objection is the legal description for the district is, includes surrounding parking lots, includes roadways that have been vacated. The new city hall building is located in a portion of this description. So our only commentary on the district is that we're suggesting the planning commission in the resolution, if you support the designation, would be to get, have them revise the legal to simply include the building itself from the south right-of-way of 11 Mile to the south building line, and then the west porch to the east porch, and not any of the surrounding parking lots or, or roadways or maneuvering lanes. And then there probably are several areas of the report that have a variety of legal descriptions in it that don't match. We would suggest that all of those then match that revised description. And then finally, our only concern was that the report expressed several opinions that are in the planning department's position, or our opinion. We're suggesting that the planning, or the planning commission, if you support it, you're not specifically endorsing some of those opinions that are stated in the report. We're not asking that they be removed from the report. We're just suggesting that your resolution indicate that you're not specifically agreeing with opinions. You're simply agreeing with placing this facility in a local historic district.
Thank you, Mr. Twing. Mr. Godak and then Ms. Douglas?
As part of a historic designation, I'm trying to give an example. If, if the Farmers Market Committee wanted, after we declare this as proposed, wanted to enclose a section of one of the covered porches, and they got behind it and they, would this put an extra restriction-
Well, procedurally, you're only providing a recommendation that goes back to the Historic District Study Committee. The city commission will have final say on whether to adopt an ordinance amendment to include this in a district and as described. So the city commission will make the final determination on whether it's in or out. Procedurally, anything that needs a building permit on the exterior of this building is going to require review by the Historic District Committee. And they'll have to bless it before it can go forward. So it'll add an additional burden of review and approval to make any exterior revisions to the building, and potentially some interior stuff if it impacts the exterior. So yes, there'll be another level of review and approval, the signage, anything like that.
And that, that extra step is by, reviewed by the, or-
Pardon me?
That, that extra step is reviewed by the Historic District Committee here?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That was essentially my question. That is, what are the implications of this towards the, the future of the market? It doesn't affect the interior, it doesn't affect operations, it only affects the exterior. Does this make it eligible for any grants? Are there maybe other benefits that we don't, aren't immediately familiar with?
I'm not aware of any specific, unless you're, and I'm not sure it's eligible, but if it was on a state register or a national register, it might be. But a local historic district designation is more to preserve the building itself than to go after grants. But I'm not aware of a specific grant it's eligible to get.
Mayor, I thought there was a voicemail behind you.
Oh. Maybe Mr. List, and then I can-
Yeah, they're behind you. There are some benefits for private owners. They may receive a tax credit or a tax write-off.
I, I think for me, you know, one of the benefits-
We don't pay any taxes.
Yeah, we don't pay, we don't pay any taxes on it. But I think for me, you know, and the reason why we supported this at the commission level, I can't speak for Commissioner Douglas, but just generalizing, is, you know, the ultimately preserving the Farmers Market building and making sure not only do we cherish it in its historical context, but that, you know, at some point in time, you know, there could be a different planning commission, there could be a different city commission. You know, it's scary, in the past, we saw proposals to sell off certain assets and whatever to fund, you know, the city. And, you know, maybe not now, maybe not 10 years from now, maybe not 50 years from now, but at least we're doing our part now to make sure that this building stays around for, you know, the foreseeable future, and that it keeps its historical context. So in my opinion, that's a benefit. So we'll always have a Farmers Market here. Well, it'll be a huge challenge for anyone to do anything from a future commission to, to undo that. So I think, you know, there might be grant opportunities, but more importantly, we're preserving the market, which is, to me, the number one goal.
Mr. Casada?
Is there, there's no petitioner on this? Because I thought we were going to hear from-
No, you got a letter. The chairman's out of the country, and the, the other committee members simply provided you with a letter.
Okay.
It is a city committee, so.
All right. I just thought we were going to hear somebody telling us why, why this needs to be done.
So I have a question, Mr. Twing. This historic designation is for the building only and not the property underneath the building?
No, it would be the, the district would cover the entire site and, and improvements to the exterior. So I think that's partially why we're suggesting the parking lots not be included, so that those can be improved and dealt with.
I think what I'm getting at is that the foundation underneath the market, let's say the market, something happened and it ceased to exist, but there was a foundation that was left. Would that foundation or that footprint be designated as historic if the building ceases to exist?
Well, number one, the historic district's going to have to approve the demolition of it. So if there's a demolition that occurred on it and they found that there was some, something under it they wanted preserved, they would do that, so.
They'd have the right to do that.
Yes.
I've just, I've had experiences with designating historic areas and something changed and a permit was needed that would have affected that, and they couldn't get the permit, or they had difficulty getting the permit because it was designated for another reason. So I was just kind of curious about that.
To go back to Mr. Godak's comment, if the Farmers Market Committee wants to make improvements to the exterior of the building, the city commission blesses those and provides dollars to those, and they need to get a building permit, before that building permit will be issued, the historic district has to get.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Godak?
The, the suggestions that, that you outlined, Mr. Twing, are contained in-
Well, there is a resolution there that covers our, on the second page of the report. It covers our comments. So if you want to make a motion to adopt that resolution, you would cover everything we said.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt that resolution.
Motion by Mr. Godak to adopt the resolution as suggested by our staff. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Casada. Is there further discussion? Mr. Godak?
There, there doesn't seem to be a downside to this. And as, as the mayor mentioned, you know, preserving these assets is a great idea.
Ms. Vicky?
I just wanted to echo that and say that I really appreciate the work of the Historic Commission on this for the benefit of the city. And also, I don't know if they would ever like to pursue the state and national registry, but I think that would be a really good idea, too, once we put this in place, because I think the long-term benefit, it's almost, it's 100 years proven, and I think it'll prove itself for the next 100. So it would be nice to get further recognition at the state and national level as well.
Ms. Douglas?
The one thing to consider is that national designation does affect the exterior of the building. And it's a far more difficult process if you need to do anything to the exterior, even like on the roof or, or whatever, then you're dealing with conditions at the national level, not just at the local level. And the state, too. Because, because this is a living building. I mean, this is a living, functioning building. It's not a museum. It, and it serves the community with fresh produce and with community activities. So I want to make sure that we keep it functioning on behalf of the city and not turn it into a museum.
I'm not saying that we should. I'm saying that the Historic Commission should perhaps consider it. And looking at nationally, places that benefit a community such as this, it might be of interest. I'm not saying that they should do it or demanding it. I just wanted to make the comment for the record.
Sure. Any other discussion? Let's call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution's been approved. Okay. Next. This is other business. This is zoning ordinance text amendments for marijuana establishments and medical marijuana facilities. Mr. Twing?
I'll, I'll make a couple of brief comments. Doug's here as well, if you've got any specific items, and he, he kind of drafted it. I know the planning commission has looked at the text amendments on at least two prior occasions, as I recall, if not a couple others. So the language that's proposed is based on those prior discussions. There are a couple of items that I, I think we're looking for clarity on in terms of primarily distance between marijuana-type establishments, making sure that we have the direction from the planning commission. But those are my just kind of overall comments. I know Ann did send out a comment sheet or some input. My only overall comment I'll say on those is, we are also, the city, looking at a licensing ordinance. That ordinance is being drafted by the city attorney's office with outside counsel. That licensing ordinance is going to address a lot of the operational issues that I think you brought up. They're not, those aren't really zoning issues. And I think the reason we're pushing to put those in there is because that, that ordinance can be reviewed on an annual basis. If, from a zoning standpoint, we grant the approval, we've got issues of nonconformity and other things. So operational items, we're going to try to keep in that licensing ordinance. So I think a lot of your comments, I think, may show up over there versus in what's in this, so.
Can I make, so I had sent those just, again, as I was reviewing things. So wherever they might, they should land, it was more for just sharing my, trying to understand better the issues that might come up. And thanks for the direction on where that would, where those comments would be most appropriate. The ones that are relevant here, I'll try to make orally while we discuss.
So Doug, you want to give a quick overview, and then we can see if you guys are comfy?
Sure. Based on the last input we had at the last several meetings, we've revised the draft language. The way it is written now, retailers, micro businesses, and provisioning centers would be allowed as special land use in both the general business and general industrial zoning districts, while growers, processors, compliance facilities, and transporters would be allowed, also allowed as special land use, but only in the general industrial district. The other uses created under the emergency rules created by the state would not be included, and those would not be allowed in any of the zoning districts. The 1,000-foot setback that's applicable from K through 12 schools was revised. We've used the 1,000-foot distance, which is the maximum allowable under the very, the two state laws. If these regulations are adopted, and if at some point in the future the city decides that distance could be reduced, it could be done, you could do that without creating any other nonconforming uses out of any establishments that may be opened in that time. The reverse would not be true. If we adopted a lower standard and then at some point in the future had to increase it, we would be creating nonconforming uses. So we recommend using, to start with, the 1,000-foot setback, and then see how it goes. And in the future, if it needs to be scaled back, the city can do so. We're also looking, as Tim mentioned, some direction on applying the 1,000-foot buffer setback between marijuana uses. We were not clear, based on the commission's input at the previous meetings, if the 1,000-foot distance should be applied just between the retail marijuana uses or all marijuana uses. So the language within the ordinance, before you this evening, we've listed both options in red text. So we would like some directions on where, what uses, are you looking to impose that 1,000-foot separation? Is it just the retail uses, or is it all marijuana uses? The growers and processes as well as the micro businesses and retailers? Those are the major provisions in it. Most of the remaining text is kind of the same, with a few minor revisions based on the input at the last meeting. Be happy to answer any questions, or specifically to see what the commission's direction is regarding the 1,000-foot separation.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor?
So Mr. Hedges, and maybe Mr. List, this is part for you as well. So what I heard you say, and I apologize for my illness last meeting, the, so from a general legal perspective, if we allow one type of establishment to come in, we have to let them all in. Now, we can use zoning, we can- Now, we can use zoning, we can say, okay, well, you know, and just like we have here, the industrial, we let them all in, but we can say like growers have to be in industrial area and retailers can be in other areas. And you're saying, from what I hear, is that we can also, what you're looking for feedback on is the setbacks. So we could say, okay, for growers, you have to be 1,000 feet away or, and then for micro businesses, you could be 500 feet. Or, you know, we have that ability, that legal right to make distinctions between, you know, large retail operations and how far away we think they should be away from churches and schools and maybe smaller micro businesses that have, you know, limited, I think in here, 150 plants or something like that. And maybe, you know, where they're located as far as that distance. So we, we have the ability to do that. So that, that, sort of that thought that if you allow one, it applies to everyone or type, doesn't transcend once we're doing the zoning.
Well, the only comment I'll make on allowing them all, the ones that you have to deal with and all of them are the recreational marijuana law owners, I believe six. And then the rules and reg, regulations that came out from the state department says they added consumption facilities.
Like the events and promotions, yeah, those ones sort of kicked out.
And those four, based on the opinion from Mr. Gillum, are not required. So that's why I think the consumption establishments, the temporary events are all specifically out of, of this ordinance. So it wouldn't allow those, those four. The others that are specifically in the statute, you have to deal with, so we're dealing with all of them. Either in, either in industrial or general business.
What's, um, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight bullets down. Talks about what's not allowed. I don't understand what an excessive marijuana grower is. Is that a term that's-
It's a, it's an additional license that the, the labor bureau, what is it, the department I'm trying to-
I forgot what they changed the acronym to.
Anyways-
They're on about the third or fourth one.
The, the department that wrote the rules and regulations added four different types of licenses. And one of those was an excessive marijuana grower.
So that's an annual.
So they could buy an additional license to grow more marijuana.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Casada and Ms. Douglas.
Just a clarification. So what I understood when I looked at this last month, and I hope I don't have it wrong, there's a mandatory, if you wanna opt out of recreational, you have to opt out. But if you wanna, if you want medical marijuana, you have to opt in. So, just so for the record, we could, as a city, and not this commission, but we could opt in to recreational, not medical. Is that correct?
Yes.
But these amendments would address both. Do these assume that they'll be both medical and recreational?
That's correct.
Okay. That's a clarification. Let me-
We didn't see a point in allowing one and not allowing the other.
But the city commission could do that. So I just wanted to, I just wanna be clear on that. Would there be any reason while marijuana business couldn't apply for, if we adopted this, rezoning of a parcel or conditional rezoning, would that be an option for them?
Well, I think anyone's allowed to apply for rezoning. Whether or not you feel the general business district is appropriate for that location is a determination you'll make as you go through that process. And so if it's not an appropriate location, you would turn it down.
Okay. But they could, that would be, there's no prohibition in here or, or, I mean, it's something to think about, whether there should be one or shouldn't be one, but that's why I asked the question.
I, I don't know how you'd write, write a prohibition under zoning law that allows you to petition to rezone property.
Well, there already is one. There already is one. I would say the question would be if, if this, the marijuana businesses are subject to the same overall zoning ordinance otherwise and they, it seems to me they would be able to apply to rezone or condition rezone. The question would be, do we, do we wanna address that in, in this specific section? I don't know. But I just raised it.
Ms. Douglas.
So in section of, of the, so, text itself, in B3, and, and I think this is something you're seeking, the staff is seeking clarification from, from us. The suggestion is that, I'm gonna oversimplify this, but retailers have to be 1,000 feet from each other. Stores have to be 1,000 feet from each other. But we do not establish that same setback requirement in, for the other more sort of wholesale operations, the growing, the processing and so on and so forth. And yet, we have allowed stores, retail establishments in the industrial zoning as well as in general business. So because we thought, you know, there might be a grower who also, you know, finds it convenient to operate a store on their premises or next to their premises. But this would then extend that setback, setback radius into the commercial zoning and potentially apply there as well to retail establishments. So if you've got two growers in an industrial zone and they're, you know, 500 feet apart, only one of them can have a store.
Right.
Is that-
Depending on which way you wanna go with the distances. I mean, you could, you could apply it across the board, so. That's why we're looking for clarification on where do you wanna go.
So right now, you, you, your draft suggests a thousand feet limitation or setback just for, and again, oversimplifying, stores. And not for growers, processors, et cetera. Is there a strategic reason for that?
I believe it was based on your input from last meeting.
Yeah, there, from what I remember, there was discussion on each is, you know, do we apply the buffer setback to just retail uses or to all different uses?
I think maybe it comes down to you have limited industrial, right, properties. And so therefore, if you make it too restrictive-
Right. Really, do you want growers next door to growers?
Yeah.
And, and then your scenario is if you have a retail license or one of those other licenses on top of the grower license in the same place, then that distance is gonna start applying to-
The growers.
Others, yeah.
Yeah. I'm good with that. Just wanted to articulate it, but-
Okay.
Again-
So if there are two growers within 800 feet, only one could have a store?
Right.
Right.
Okay.
But that's the same as if you're in general business and you wanna be a retailer, the same. You know, if somebody else buys the building right next to you and they decide to put one in, then you can't, you know, then, you know, first come. I guess they get the, the first right over the, the second party, which would be in this case as well.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Casada.
Doug, on page two of your report here, you've got four dots. Dots two and three. I, I don't remember discussing those at the last meeting. So could you just explain, I think the second one is a little bit vague to me. And I'd also like some, your, your insight on, on what you were intending with number three there.
Page two?
Yes.
Most of those came from comments that were submitted to us after the meeting about including more standards regarding facade renovations and facade enhancements, for lack of a better word, that are intended to draw, mostly just intended to draw attention to a building, such as the, the lighting and other features. That's where those standards came from.
I have another question. This one maybe for the, for the lawyer. Security curtains and metal bars and gates, is, is the marijuana business a cash business? Is that, is there, they don't, they can't use a bank, they can't use credit cards? Isn't that correct?
It's changing.
It still violates federal law, so it's all a cash business.
It's changing.
Good work.
Yep.
I think the House of Representatives passed a bill.
That shouldn't last very long.
Mr. Godak.
When Commissioner Douglas brought up the business district, I guess I understand about starting off real restrictive 'cause then you can loosen things up if, if needed, so you don't create non-conforming. So I probably won't ask for any amendments it has written. But I could see where, if you do have growers in the business district where it's, I think that's where is a good spot for them to, to have retail. And if they were closer than 1,000 foot, I wouldn't see that as a problem. What I see is the, from the, if you go to the map, the retailers are basically just gonna be allowed on Woodward. And to me, that kind of raises some concern that, you know, every 1,000 foot, there's gonna be a retailer on both sides of our iconic highway in the city. But that's, you know, when you look at the map, there's really not a lot of places. I understand about starting off restrictive, but, and I don't know where I'm going, so I'll stop.
You sure know where you're at.
We were attentive at least.
Yeah, so, I don't know what I just, never mind.
Ms. Bicki.
Just, are you suggesting along Woodward, we might wanna be more restrictive because it could turn into green light, green door, green light?
Yeah, it could look like-
At least to start with? I mean, we talked about not limiting the numbers.
Well, you can't be more restrictive than 1,000 feet.
Oh, we cannot?
Right.
Oh, there we go.
That's the maximum you can do.
We can only, only if we limit it and so we couldn't have it in general business.
And 1,000 feet is, you're not gonna be able to be on the west side of Woodward and on the east side of Woodward. 1,000 feet is 1,000 feet measured.
The only, the only way we could restrict it further is to put it only in general industrial.
Right.
And, and take general business off, so.
The 1,000 feet would be measured from the property boundaries, so.
Yes.
You wouldn't be able, as I said, to do it on opposite side of the street. It's still gonna be measured from, if it's on the west side-
Or the corner.
To one on the east side by the nearest line between the two property boundaries.
Ms. Bicki.
The other, the only other way would be if some, if some portions of this Woodward were rezoned in a different way, correct?
Yeah, the-
Mixed use or, I mean, just to understand. Yeah, okay. I'm not suggesting we do that. I'm just, just to understand the-
Well, the next step is if you're comfortable with the wording, we, at some point, we're gonna have to publish it for, and hold a public hearing in front of the planning commission. Given, given the licensing ordinance that's gonna come in tandem with this, you know, you could, we could schedule a public hearing on the zoning ordinance for November and forward a recommendation to the city commission. And then the city commission can sit on it until it has the licensing ordinance that it wants for operational purposes and deal with them both at the same time. Or we can wait on holding the public hearing on the zoning ordinance until at least we have a draft of the licensing ordinance to see if there are any inconsistencies or things that we need to tweak. So I'm gonna look for your direction on whether you wanna wait or whether you wanna hold a public hearing on the draft and get public input. So that's really where we're at.
I mean, I think from my perspective, I think we did a lot of the blocking and tackling here, you know, as far as the basics. But it would be interesting for me, I mean, the sort of, we can get public feedback on this and input is very helpful. I think whatever we have, or at least if we have an idea of what the licensing provisions allow the city commission to do and not do, I think that'd be very helpful, especially for the public, because these things do overlap and, you know, they work together as gears, not necessarily as independent, you know, decisions. You know, for me, I think, and probably a lot of my issues fall into maybe more of the licensing and I don't know how far you can push your zoning, you know, amendments here to really address it. I, I think I've said, you know, what I'm in fear of is that, you know, there's, this is sort of the new gold rush, right? And, you know, we saw it, and I'm not trying to compare the same thing, but we saw with like the fireworks stores. You know, they all came in, opened up all the fireworks stores, took up real estate and then, phew. I just don't know that, you know, there's a lot of money out there, there's a lot of big guys out there, like you see in Colorado. You know, eight firms have the entire market. We have people coming in from out of state, buying up our valuable real estate. They all go in and they can lose a million bucks, you know, no big deal. But, you know, all of a sudden, our economy takes a little bit of a, you know, goes, I mean, you have bull and bear markets. We get into a little bit of bear market and now these properties are kinda distressed and left open and, you know, causes sort of this, this issue caused by some outsiders. So, you know, I wanna be, to me, my feeling is if, if we're taking a little bit more of a restricted approach up front, you know, helping local and small partners, you know, enter the market here that, you know, but that's probably more taken care of in the licensing element and the plan of operations elements versus the zoning. But I think we have to be reasonable too. I mean, we can't use zoning as a tool to, you know, unfairly bias one way or the other. So we have to be, you know, careful as well. Not that that's any direction whatsoever, but they're just the words that are in my brain at the moment.
Sounds like, sounds like me trying to-
Mr. Godak.
I don't know where I've been.
Let me follow up to that clear discussion. I, I guess I agree with moving it forward as, as the only thing that I think Commissioner DeBicki was helping me try to come to something on was that maybe being, even considering being even more restrictive with retail establishments on Woodward, to not allow them in general business at first. Have your retail also only in industrial and maybe be less restricted. You know, let them be 500 feet apart in industrial, but keep them off Woodward. You know, so it wouldn't be, you wouldn't allow general business at all. I know that's going even further restricted, but that's just something for discussion. I wouldn't, I'm not proposing that right now. That's all.
Mr. Casada.
Well, I think that's something that we would certainly hear from the public that would inform our decision on something like that. I think the purpose of, of this is, as a, as a, as a starting point to bat it around. Yes?
Yep.
And I'll make one more quick comment. I'm just, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with point number two on the second page because I don't know what it means about the architectural enhancements, but I guess we can, I think the idea there is you can't have a sign, you can't, you can't have, you know, green lights, you can't have an animated sign. You only get one sign, so we're suspicious you're gonna come up with something else, you know, that's in lieu of that. I think that's what you're saying. I think the wording needs to be better, but again, we can hear from the public.
I picture a building being designed as a giant marijuana leaf and then you go in it. It's like, hey, there's no sign. You know, we, we comply. And we're gonna paint it green, neon.
Are we looking for a resolution tonight?
Ms. Bicki.
I guess I just wanna comment that I also agree that I think hearing from the public sooner rather than later would be a good idea. And I like the work we've done so far and I think the language is coming along. I also think that it's really important when we publish things to really push forward this map. I think for myself, you know, doing all of the reading and other reading from other communities, seeing the map of where we're talking as far as what would be allowed and not allowed, I think is something, maybe even to have a physical handout, because I think it's important that people don't just caught up. I mean, it's hard, it's, it's hard to understand when you get caught up in all the language, but when you start to see, oh, this would be here, it, it's easier, I think, to think about how that would affect the community. So anyway, I, I know the map's always embedded, but just if it could be like highlighted for the public, I think that's important. And also that we're talking about this and we want input, we're not making decisions on these ideas at this point. To Mr. Godak's point that we might become more restrictive if we hear, that that's what the public prefers upfront.
Mayor.
I, I, I agree. And I think if it's not on the map, I mean, this is a small detail, I'm probably micromanaging right now. But to Ms. Bicki's point, if we have like a little scale on there that shows what 1,000 feet is, you know, I think that'd be helpful too. That way people can say, I, I mean, I don't know if it's a mile. I mean, you know, some people are good with dimensions, some people are good with directions and some people are, are not.
Ms. Douglas.
And I just don't wanna let us lose sight of the need to rezone the northwest corner of 11 Mile and Main Street, which is now currently is general business and needs to be something else. So I would ask the staff to maybe, parallel with our, our, you know, public comment process, make sure that gets done.
Yep.
So we're proceeding to scheduling it for November?
Do you need a motion?
No.
No motion.
Excellent.
Let me do that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kluster.
Just to clarify, our recommendation is that we think the 1,000-foot buffer is on the retail only, retail operations only, not on the industrial operations.
Not on the growers and processors.
Right. Okay.
At least that, what we're gonna throw at the public to get some feedback on.
Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the accessory dwelling. Mr. Twain.
I'll let Doug walk through it. He's, he drafted a memo in the report, so let him give you the overview.
Well, the August thirteenth meeting while reviewing other zoning ordinance text amendments, the commission requested us to look at amendments to the zoning ordinance for allowing more forms of accessory dwelling units. What we've done is take a look at what the existing ordinance language is now, uh, which essentially allows them only for a senior member of a family, and they're required to be approved as a special land use permit by both, uh, the planning commission. Uh, we then looked at other cities that have, uh, adopted ordinances that do allow and encourage more accessory dwellings in single-family neighborhoods to see what, uh, language they have in their ordinances that is different from what we have now. We then tried to come up with a list of bullet points of if the commission wishes to proceed with doing this, the changes that would be necessary, uh, to our zoning ordinance to do that. And we've highlighted those in the bullet points on pages two and three of our memo. Uh, in summary, there'd be a fairly significant revision to our zoning ordinance to allow accessory dwellings, uh, as was suggested, as a permitted use in our one-family residential, one-family large lot residential zoning district. Um, in reviewing the, the other communities throughout the country that have done this, we have gathered some examples, as we listed, of what those changes would need to be, uh, to allow them, as the commission requested. Uh, we also noticed that in most of those communities, there was, uh, a significant, uh, opposition to both the being initially proposed and after they were adopted. Uh, most of them, what I saw was initially proposed was changed, uh, in some cases quite significantly between what was adopted. Uh, the examples in Minneapolis, Minnesota were one, uh, that they were scaled back quite a bit from what was originally proposed. What we're looking for is direction, if you wish for us to proceed in drawing up ordinance language that would address these bullet points, we can go forward and do that and bring you language, uh, to amend our zoning ordinance that will allow them. Or if there are different points you think we should be addressing, or if you don't feel we should proceed further at this point. I guess we're looking for direction on how much further do you want us to proceed in crafting ordinance amendments for accessory dwellings at this point.
Can I chat, Mr. Hedges, um, Ms. Beke and then the mayor?
I, I guess my comment would be, um, reflecting on, um, I mean, this good work in kind of exploring, uh, the topic and then thinking about, um, ongoing development and a lot of construction that's going on right now, as well as this issue about the master plan, I think there's been some interest to pursue an updating of the master plan, uh, that, I've only been on this commission for a short while, but I think in the city in general, but it has been being pushed off. And so I guess I would like to echo some of the things we heard here. I think it's great that we start to look at this as something to consider. I'm glad that we do have the, um, current ordinance that allows someone to have the senior permit, you can pursue that permission as it, as it stands. But for something that would be this substantial, I would really like to say our city update our master plan in general. I think a lot of communities around us have, and I know it's been a budget issue, but so just from, for the record, I think this would be great as something to explore as a bigger, um, thinking. And the other thing, um, reflecting on all the development that's going on, it would be nice to see some of that get done and see how that does affect our rental market and such. Um, and so that would be my, um, thinking, you know, from past issues and then from what we heard tonight.
Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Hedges, I'd like to thank you for, uh, pulling this together because I think the question was appropriate the last commission meeting. I mean, our city commission, uh, has been grappling with, you know, I mean, it's a positive, it's a catch twenty-two. You get rising property values, which is great for everybody that owns a home. Um, it's great for a lot of reasons, but then, you know, affordability becomes a problem, especially for, uh, people on fixed incomes, uh, people on lower incomes, which could mean our senior population, could mean our kids one day, could mean us one day. Um, and so trying to look at solutions in an objective way and understanding, okay, if, you know, this is an idea that's out there, we want to, we currently have something on the books right now, um, but that really doesn't deal with accessory buildings. It's more attached to the, the, the building and, and, um, you know, we found the use of that was somewhat minimal. Um, but looking at and seeing, you know, hey, we've heard some other communities have done this, what does this look like? You know, with the target of, you know, making sure people can age in place. Um, all of these other ancillary issues, uh, I think, um, have to be discussed and debated and, and, you know, um, we have to feel comfortable with a master plan review and all of these other things. Uh, but I think the initial question was, is this possible, what would it look like? And is this something that could help meet some of our goals? Because we do have a gap in, in, you know, uh, housing, especially for, uh, the senior population. And I think when I look at this and I look at the, the, um, the reason why we're, we're, uh, you know, taking these things and trying to get these questions answered, um, I don't see, you know, profiteering opportunity um, throughout our neighborhoods. I don't think that was the spirit of the question. I see people like my parents, my dad, you know, getting older, has had some medical issues, contemplating on where they want to be, where they want to go. Maybe they want to come here and, and move into my brother's property, maybe they want to move, you know, near us. Um, and finding that affordability, you know, is this an option? And, and my story isn't unique, um, there are, um, countless people who, you know, we have to consider how we're going to care for our parents. The baby boomer generation is getting older and it's, it's almost in disproportion to the younger generation. And so, you know, we're going to have a, a gap in nurses, doctors, everything in Oakland County. It's going to be much harder to get older. And so looking at this and evaluating this with an objective idea, but also, you know, I mean, there are some, some downsides that I think, you know, we have to look at and, and consider. I don't think it's anyone's, um, thought or intention here to, you know, open up our neighborhoods to a, to a large, you know, free-for-all rental market so, you know, out-of-town landlords can get rich quick. I think, you know, the spirit, I think, of what we're trying to look at here is to say, what can we do to give options to families? I think what Mr. Curtis said was completely appropriate. You know, what can we do to make sure that we can keep families together here in this community? So, um, in the spirit of that, I appreciate the fact that you've, uh, answered these questions. How we would go about evaluating any change in our neighborhoods, I think, is a question and a discussion and a dialogue we need to have. But I think this is a good start for us to understand, okay, what's a baseline? And I think the question is appropriate to ask.
Ms. Douglas and then Mr. Casana.
Uh, yeah, I, um, just a, a couple of things, um, to clarify here. Uh, there was talk here tonight about short-term rentals. Those are different from accessory dwelling units. An ADU may turn into a short-term rental, but they're, they're two entirely separate concepts. And in Royal Oak right now, any short-term rentals we have are, are generally, um, single-family homes or in some cases condominiums. Um, so the, our current ordinance allows somebody to put an addition on their house that is a complete living unit, and that means a kitchen, I expect. I mean, because otherwise it's just a, you know, bedroom with a bathroom. Um, but you can only do that for an elderly family member. And then when that, or, or another family member, and when that person passes away or moves, you can't, A, you can't rent that or, or have someone else live there who doesn't meet those family connections. And B, the, um, use does not pass with the house, so that you're not going to be able to sell that house to anybody because they're not going to be able to use that second half of the duplex unless they too have an elderly person in their family. So, I mean, if our goal is to help keep families together or close to each other, um, I don't think the current ordinance is doing the job. Um, so I'd like, I mean, I, at some point, that's something I think we need to reconsider along the way. Um, but I just want to say, I, I, you know, I hear people say government is not transparent. Um, right now, there's no zoning text ordinance being talked about, there are just ideas here. Um, and the planning commission is the right place to explore ideas. No decisions are being made, there's no rush to judgment here. There are plenty of opportunities and a necessity for further, um, public comment and, and public information on this. And I, we need to do it because there are people in Royal Oak who like the idea of accessory dwelling units. And I think the people we heard from here tonight are, are a coordinated group, and we could hear that in the consistency of their talking points. So we need a very openly communicated, widely communicated process that many people of all interests can participate in. Um, I think we need to visualize this for people. I mean, uh, we see staff recommendations for, uh, all the time, but it would really help, um, in a public session to show people images of accessory dwelling units in other cities, how they're cited, how they're, how they're managed. Um, we benefit from the experiences of other cities, you know, we can learn from their mistakes. Um, we heard some good ideas here tonight, I mean, communities which have a saturation limit, um, or communities which require a public hearing for all access, uh, uh, ADUs. So those are just two of the ways that cities manage, um, these properties and that we could as well. Um, but I think the idea is worthy of discussion or further discussion in a, a more of a work session in, or town hall environment.
Mr. Casana, did you have your hand up and then mayor?
Um, I did, I, I, mayor mentioned the baseline and, uh, Shar mentioned, um, you know, the current ordinance, but I have to tell you something, I, I'm a little ignorant in this, and just for the record, I'd like to learn more about it. It, it, it's a special land use now to have a senior, uh, housing unit, dwelling house. We haven't seen any of those, uh, here where they have to come to us.
Yes.
Okay. I haven't seen one the whole time I've been here.
I didn't either.
And so, again, the first question I have is what qualifies? It has to have a bedroom, has to have a kitchen, has to have a bathroom?
Uh, it also has to be recorded at the county, it's got some other stipulations in it as far as, uh, the regulations that were, when, when the person that's, uh, related passes away or moves out, it has to be converted back.
I'm sort of wondering what qualifies as this type of dwelling? I mean, do they have to have a separate entrance, do they have a, have a firewall? I mean, is-
Yeah, the intent is to have a separate facility so you can have your own living space.
Okay, but it's, it's, under the current ordinance, it's attached or within.
Right.
So I just, I, I'm, I'm wondering what we know, if it's, if it's not something that's used very much, or do people just move mom into the back bedroom and, um-
I would suspect that's what's occurring on the manor. They're not putting a separate unit in for separate entrances and separate space and separate kitchen, and they're just moving into part of the house.
And I would think if somebody puts an addition on the back, they might put a little kitchen or a, or a bathroom in anyways. So, um, it's, it's not, we, we don't have data, or do we have data, about seniors living with, in a single-family house? We just know they don't come before us.
Well, no one has come under the provisions in the current ordinance since I've been here, so.
Right.
Okay, I guess-
And you've been here, uh-
Twenty-eight years.
Yeah.
That doesn't necessarily mean they're not doing something, they're just not coming to us. Okay, thanks.
Um, mayor and then Mr. Codick.
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, if we're going to have this conversation, I think a lot of it has been, you know, what I heard at public comment tonight about, I mean, I, I had to go back and look at the document two or three times uh, because I was hearing things that just didn't seem to jive with what, you know, I, uh, watched and reviewed at the last commission meeting, and what I actually saw was the objective in the, the document. There seemed to be a significant disconnect. Because I don't think there's any discussion about, you know, at least in my opinion, when you're talking about, you know, um, you know, rentals and, and all of this, you're, the owner has to occupy, you know, at least that was a suggestion. Like if you are having a parent move into the accessory building, you have to be owner occupied, whatever. I mean, there are things we can talk about where you can't charge rent, you know what I mean? There's a lot of things you can do, and, and the idea that maybe, um, you know, the caretaker lives there, um, or, or vice versa. Um, I think, you know, people have equity in their homes, they want to age in place. They might need a caretaker instead of moving into a, a facility. They could have, you know, their caretaker there in the house, maybe they, they can't charge them rent, but it's, you know, helps offset the cost for that caretaker, and, you know, they get the services that they need. Um, so, I mean, there's so much here that, uh, it's not about rentals, it's not, I mean, you can restrict it, you can make, I mean, basically, it's an extension of what we tried to do with the original ordinance, but giving another option and opportunity, which I, I think is worth hearing. Um, I think some of the, the questions, and I, and I appreciate they probably came from a genuine place, but about, you know, the costs, like, oh, if it's eight hundred dollars or a thousand dollars. I got to tell you, you know, I got two sets of grandparents and, you know, they've both passed away, obviously. Um, you know, one set, you know, would not have been able to afford a two thousand dollar apartment in Royal Oak. They would need somewhere to live. The other set of grandparents moved into a, um, apartment community and lived there thirty years, the last thirty years of their life. And they were contributing members of society, you know? My grandfather, retired air force, you know, uh, big member in the community. Um, and, you know, because he didn't own a home anymore, it didn't mean that he didn't need access to affordable housing in an apartment building. And so I think this, this argument, we got to be careful because we can't just go out and villainize renters and say renters don't participate. And there's some interesting stuff out there that Harvard's done on renters versus homeownership, and it'd be worth reading. I suggest all of you take a look, I can send you the article. Um, but I, I, I also think that with this, what we're trying to do here, we're not trying to blow up the rental market in single-family, you know, neighborhoods. What we're trying to do is solve an issue that we have. We have an aging population that's aging rapidly and will be disproportionate, uh, to the rest of the population that we see today. And we have to have housing that accommodates their budgets, and we have to have housing. And we're working on stuff, um, from, uh, the commission side. When new developments come in, what are those standards, what do we need to look at, what do we need to do? But, you know, we got to look in every nook and cranny to make sure that, you know, we've evaluated every option so everyone can continue to call this place home regardless of your age or income.
Mr. Kloster and Ms. Beke?
You skipped me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Codick. I was doing pretty good keeping track.
You were, and there's a lot of people that want to talk about it. Um, we, we can say a lot of examples of, of, of our, um, aging population and, and parents and, and what, um, what we can do for them. And, um, uh, we've all probably have examples of that, and I, I can speak to one with, um, uh, with my parents. Um, but you find a way, uh, to take care of your family, um, and whether that's, um, you know, bringing them into, into your home, um, sticking a, um, you know, uh, some improvements to the home to, to make them comfortable. And, and I, I think people will continue to do that, you take care of your own. Um, whether we look at accessory dwelling units or not. I, it is, um, I, I think this is a topic that is great to talk about, but, um, of the options that were presented by Mr. Hedges, um, I, I would proceed with a lot of caution about going further with this because it does have the potential of creating two-family units. Um, that don't, you know, after, um, the parent or whoever, um, no longer needs the property, you, you basically have our beautiful stock of single-family units without renters in them, um, to two-family units. And this could proliferate that in some fashion. And that's why I think there's a lot of opposition to it because you can read a Harvard study all day long, and I, please don't take this as a shot, but, um, you can have some renters live next door that are pretty unruly too. Um, and I've, I've experienced that in, in a couple of, of the places. And, and I do have a, a second property that I do rent out, so I'm a landlord. But, um, people that tend to have ownership in a property are more responsible. And I, I won't make judgments on, on affordability or, you know, if, if someone can pay a seven hundred dollar a month rent or a two thousand dollar a month rent if they're a better person or not. But, um, you know, uh, the, the, to increase our, our stock of homes with, with two-family, which this could do in, in, in certain situations is of concern to me. And I, 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 I would not like to pursue this any further other than if it does go to, uh, where we review a master plan where it could be vetted very well and something like that.
Mr. Kloster?
Yeah, I would, um, would also recommend some additions. Um, City Lab out of UCLA, Dana Cuff, has done a tremendous amount of work on accessory dwelling units. Um, as far as urban analysis, all the way down to formalization of what a successful ADU unit can be. Um, and it's, you know, it's a little bit in the context of LA, but there's a lot of really good general information there. Um, in LA, it was approached as an opportunity to diversify the housing- In LA, it was approached as an opportunity to diversify the housing stock and legalize something that was being done pretty much anyways. And I would suspect that there are instances in our city where it's being done anyway. If you legalize it, I think you put parameters around how you want it done and how it can be helpful for the city, how it can be appropriate for the city versus how it can be appropriate for an individual or how it can be appropriate for a particular instance. There's, I think there's a lot of more study that needs to be done as far as how it fits into an urban context. I think broad swath changing all single-family zoning to allow it. There's probably some instances where it's not appropriate and could lead to instances where you have adverse situations by allowing it in that single-family zoning area. So, it's, it's an appropriate discussion to have. I think our community is not particularly diverse in its housing opportunities. It's single-family and some multifamily, which tend to be multifamily apartments. There's limited stock, I think, of that missing middle. And I think that's kind of the study that we conducted that gets referenced a lot when we start talking about diversifying housing stock. So, this is one of the opportunities to diversify housing stock. It's been done successfully in lots of different areas. And it's worth studying more to see if it makes sense in particular areas in our city. But I tend to echo some of the comments that we probably need to do a master plan. It's, it needs to fit within an overall study of where our city sits now and where it's going to sit in the next 20 years. And I think a lot of, a lot of what's happened in the last 20 years has really revolutionized the way people inhabit and function in their cities. And thing, the technology that we have now probably couldn't have been foreseen 20 years ago and really changes the way that we use our housing, use our public spaces, function in retail environments. All those things should be considered. And a much broader look makes sense when we start talking about things like this.
Ms. Baker and then Mayor?
Um, I just, I think one point of clarification or maybe just a change in the subject line here, you know, the memo that was attached to our agenda said zoning ordinance text amendments. And maybe it should have said zoning ordinance exploration and not mention text amendments? Because again, we were not trying to, I know, I'm just saying that that, just communication matters and words matter. And so maybe that was a little bit misleading. And so, as we move forward discussing this at all, maybe that would be helpful just to be careful. When we're, to make sure the language is reflecting this as an exploration and not a formalization of some ideas that this, when this was very preliminary in our first glance at some potential changes. And also, I know this, I wanted to mention this earlier, maybe even in the other public comments, but an example of other places where we could seek this kind of housing on that Knowles and Harrison project, you know, which is in the process of potentially moving forward. That's the one with a lot of townhouses, about eight different buildings. And they're all townhouses. But that's an example to me that could have been restructured somewhat to have flat units closer to where the property line of other houses are. So it's not overlooking and maybe some diversified units closer to the street up there. And so, because again, we're a, we have multiple different kind of housing, especially close to the downtown. But in different areas, we might want to explore more diversification. That's one example where I think that could have been pushed a little further with the developer to be more appropriate for our needs as a community as well as aesthetic needs and as well as saving that tree, which is very important to me. But at the same time, I don't say that we shouldn't discuss this further. I think we should. I think we should learn. I think we should explore. But I do feel very strongly that that master plan needs to be reviewed and really reflect where we're going. And we're in the 21st century, and the original one, I think, is from the 80s. It'd only been updated kind of haphazardly. So I just think it's something that we should figure out how to fit.
Nineties, 1990.
Nineties, okay, nineties. Anyway, that's.
Yeah, I just say, I'd like to echo what Mr. Kloster said. I think he's dead nuts on. And then just to, just so people understand what my thought is, because I think it's important from the mayor's perspective. And while I think Mr. Goddick and I actually agree. I mean, I don't want to see, you know, any changes that we make through the master plan process, whatever's the best way to go about it. How we address aging in place is not the same as saying, okay, well, we're going to have all of these homes pop up. Someone passes away and now they're, you know, a free multifamily unit in the middle of a neighborhood renting or whatever. I think we can take provisions. What we're really talking about is, at least from my perspective, the reason why this was brought up was about, you know, does this make sense from a family needs perspective? You know, is this a place? I don't see, you know, parties in wild, you know, I mean, I guess it could happen, you know? But my grandmother, when she was 94, she was going to bed at, you know, 7:30 at night. But I don't see that being an issue if your mother-in-law or your grandmother or, you know, your parents are living, you know, in an accessible building. And I know people may, they're already doing it, parents move in. But we also, not everyone can, you know, build onto their house extensively, and sometimes this might be a good option. I don't know if it's the right answer or not. I mean, I'd like to get a lot of feedback from the public. But I think understanding, you know, what it would take to do it and then deciding whether or not we go through a process and consider it in a master plan process. If it's dead on arrival, whatever it may be. But I think addressing the housing need that we have of people that are aging and people that are on fixed incomes is paramount. So I think regardless of if this is an option or not, I think looking at the master plan and getting recommendations from our task force is key. And we have to make changes. I mean, people aren't getting younger.
Any other comments?
Well, direction-wise, what I'm hearing is we're going to wait on this until the master plan is decided to go forward.
So I have a question about that. I don't want to sound naive, but how is the master plan, not that we shouldn't look at the master plan, but how is that going to relate to the onesie-twosie type things that we might be seeing throughout the city where somebody who's in need might have to put this in? I mean, Tim's been here 20 years and has not seen one. So what would the master plan address? Maybe we can answer this tonight, I don't know. What would the master plan address that would solve that? You know, solve a potential problem that the city sees? I don't, I don't get that because we may have, the master plan may be redone. And then all of a sudden, we may have three people within one year in different parts of the city that want to solve this problem with a dwelling unit where they can, you know, invite their parents in. What's the master plan going to do for that? I don't, I'm not getting that. Educate me.
Well, I think part of the master plan, and Shar can dive into if she likes, Doug, you can dive into. But I think part of the master plan process is getting the public input on where, how, and what types of land uses you want to see in your community. And do you want to see ADUs, accessory dwelling units? Right now, as you brought up, the accessory unit that we're proposing is part of the principal unit. It's not a building that's set somewhere else.
Not an accessory building.
It's not, it's not something out there. And I think that there may be a few of those where people have converted a garage to a living unit. But there aren't that many because when they're caught, they're kicked out.
Right.
Because there's building code issues with it. There's a lot of zoning code issues with it. Unless you, unless you have one that was existing prior to the codes in place, there, those accessory dwelling units.
Are attached.
Are, they're not attached to the primary building. They're an accessory to it. They're in a different building.
Currently attached.
They're attached currently, right, okay.
So. That's, but I guess the question you would get into the master plan, it goes to a little bit of Eric's comment too, is if you wanted these, what districts would you allow them in? And would you create a new zoning district that would allow them in certain parts of the city but not in others? There's a lot of things I think you would look at from a guideline standpoint of setting your land use policy as to what, how, and what you want to see with the public input on it. From that, you're going to write the code provisions. Or you're not going to write them. You're going to say you don't want them and go there. So I think that's more the purpose of the.
It's a more, opportunity for more public input.
Right, and putting your policy statements together, not specific provisions.
Okay.
Ms. Douglas?
Yeah, I think, I appreciate what Mr. Kloster said about, you know, how things have changed in the past 20 years. And, I mean, a master plan process doesn't start with looking at houses and neighborhoods and so forth. It starts with reexamining what our community's values are and what the conditions are that we live in now in the world and in our city in terms of transportation and social needs, as the mayor has so clearly articulated. That's really where a master plan has to start, is with that top-level definition of values and conditions before we start, you know, building buildings. And I think that's what we were going for when, because this commission did vote to go through a master plan, and the city commission has not implemented that. And I'll continue to push them to implement that because I think times have changed in 20 years. And we do need to reexamine our master plan.
Anything else?
Just one shortcoming. I guess when I listened to this discussion about ADU, I feel like what I'm hearing is there's one part of it about the senior community and this idea of, you know, this attached dwelling hasn't been explored because basically it turns your house into a duplex in a way. So maybe people just have duplexes. But an ADU that's for special use for a family, whether it's for a senior or whether it has something to do with a caretaker for a disabled person or whatever that mix would be, where it's a private use of your ADU. Most of the opposition I heard today was more if it would become an ADU permissive situation where that could be for any reason, which again relates to whether that, there's a timeout on how long you have permission to have it in your community. And so, again, having listened to all of that, I feel like they're almost two different things. There's one thing about a family's ability to take care of themselves and that sort of thing versus the renting it out. And I just wanted to make that point of clarification. And I think, again, we should explore it both on its own as well as in the broader context. But be careful to say that we're in an exploratory phase at this point. And we would not proceed without further public input and such.
So.
We're going to sit on it till you do a master plan, I guess.
It's either that or the only other thing I would think is some exploration about, you know, how they physically look and such. But it would probably be premature at this point.
Yeah, well, I think you can, I mean, in my opinion, you can. Yeah, you can have conversations in preparation of a master plan, right? So you can hit the ground running. So there's no reason why we can't look at all different elements from transit to, you know, what single-family home, you know, ordinances might need to be tweaked to, you know, where's the best place now that we have, pretty much all of our industrial is gone? And what does that mean to, you know? Even, I will argue that, you know, neighborhood business is changing a lot too. You know what I mean? It's, everything around us is changing. And I think even, you know, I heard, and I can tell you from my professional experience outside the city, that mobility is changing faster than you can even imagine. And that's going to wreak, I think, tremendous havoc in a positive way, but also along with a huge amount of pitfalls when it comes to how the new economy will work and how people will work, how they'll drive, where they'll go, how they won't drive. And what does that mean for everything around us, including where we live? I once, I can't remember who had the quote, but sometimes the best transit plan is a fantastic urban plan. So, you know, and especially this area, if you look at Metro Detroit and you look at where Royal Oak is situated. It's kind of hard to have a conversation up here. Can you guys keep it a little down for me, please? Thank you. You know, we're, we have a lot of what you'll call issues with income inequality across the region. And people, you know, in poorer areas driving long distances to where the work is and vice versa. And I think there's going to be, with the new advancements in mobility, there's going to be a lot of changes. And so, you know, we probably need to look at it and at least be prepared for it and start making decisions now so we can protect our community and take advantage of opportunities that are happening in the market.
Well, one last comment. One of the other things that you asked staff to look at was the multifamily provisions. So very similar, it's a much lengthier report, but you're going to get one on it as well in the coming months.
Called an exploration.
We will term it, term it something differently if that's. Again, you asked for input on some of the current provisions and things that are happening with that. So you're going to get a report on that as well.
Make sure we understand.
And any new ideas that we have, I mean, look at the city's priorities. Aging in place is a priority. So whether, you know, the next exploration, I mean, we should keep these themes in mind. Like, we're trying to, you can't, there's never a one solution. It's, if we're going to do this and we're going to, you know, make sure we care for our elders, we got to think about it from every avenue. So I think it's an ongoing, it's not wait till the master plan. It's always continuing to educate ourselves and make sure we're prepared. So when that happens, you know, we hit the ground running.
Ms. Douglas?
Yeah, and the multifamily thing is, I mean, I think we're responding to a real need that's putting stuff on our plate that doesn't, shouldn't be on our plate when we've got apartment buildings coming in as planned unit developments because they want to meet contemporary market needs and standards. And our configure, zoning, building configurations are so out of date. I mean, my goal is to get these things out of, you know, planned unit developments and use PUDs for what they're meant for, which is mixed-use development, and also get rid of the conditional zonings that we've seen come to us. And I think if we can match the needs of the market in terms of our multifamily specifications, it's going to make life easier for us and let us focus on the things that are truly important. I mean, real planned unit developments, real mixed-use opportunities as they come forward.
Any other discussion on this? Do we need to take any verbal action?
No, I'm, I, there's, we'll wait till there's a request for more discussion or a master plan.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else, then we'll move on to the last item under other business. And that's the notice of intent to update the master plan from the City of Madison Heights.
That's simply informational. They're required to provide you with that notice, so we're giving it to you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that? For Mr. Twing, not seeing any, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there support? Together now.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.